Columbus, Georgia. This is your city council. Mayor, Skip Henderson. City manager, Isaiah Hughley. Byron Hickey, District 1. Glenn Davis, District 2. Bruce Huff, District 3. Toya Tucker, District 4. Charmaine Crabbe, District 5. Gary Allen, District 6. Joanne Kogle, District 7. Walker Garrett, District 8. Judy Thomas, District 9. At-large counsel, Travis Chambers. District 10, at-large counsel, Sandra Davis, clerk of counsel and city attorney, Clifton Fay. Columbus, Georgia. This is your city council.
Good evening and welcome to the November 19th city council meeting. And we're delighted to have you all with us. We are going to begin this meeting as we begin all of our meetings, and that's by asking God's presence in this place during these proceedings. I think we've got Pastor Cheryl King of Peter's Chapel AME Church. Pastor, if you want to come to the, like, you may have to push the button and we'll get it turned on for you. There we go.
Thank you, Mayor, and I greet you and your staff and the council tonight, and thank you for this opportunity. Let us bow our heads in prayer. Gracious and merciful Father, we come to you this night, Lord God, thanking you for all that you are and for all that you do, and we thank you for just being our God. We thank you for blessing us to see this another day. We thank you, Lord God, for your provision and supplying all of our needs. We thank you for your pardon and forgiving us of all of our sins, and we thank you for your protection in keeping us from harm and danger. Lord, we thank you for this mayor and this council and their choosing to serve this community. We lift each of them up to you right now, Lord God, and we pray that you will cover them and keep them and protect them and bless them. Lord, we pray that you, a God, give them the guidance and direction that they need as they ponder their items on the agenda tonight. And we pray, Lord God, for knowledge and wisdom and understanding for them to be able to do what needs to be done and to put personal agendas aside, Lord, as they do what is best for this community and for the people that they serve. And Lord, as we look to the Thanksgiving season, we thank you for all of the blessings that you have bestowed upon us. We thank you for food, and we remember the hungry. We thank you for shelter, and we remember the homeless. We thank you for health, and we remember the sick. We thank you for family, and we remember the lonely and the forgotten. And we thank you for friends, and we remember the friendless. And we ask, Lord, that you bless them as you have blessed us. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. And thank you, church, for sharing you with us this evening. And we really are grateful for you braving this wonderful weather we're having right now. So thank you for, thank you for being here. If you would, please stand and join me in a pledge to our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We are starting about 30 minutes early tonight. We had a request to start just a little bit sooner. And actually, we're going to go into an executive session. Hit your button again, Mr. Fay. Mr. Attorney, we're going to go into executive session on personnel and litigation.
Personnel and litigation, yes, sir.
Okay. Well, we will need a motion from the table.
A second.
All right, it's a motion and a second. Any discussion on the executive session? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? All right, we will respectfully request that you all clear the council chambers. Hopefully, this won't be long. All right, we are, we have been in executive session. We discussed litigation and personnel, and we didn't take any votes. So we'll move back into our, our regular session. First item on the agenda is to approve the minutes from November 12th. There's a motion, second, approve those minutes. Any edits or any discussion? All right, hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, minutes are approved. All right, we're going to move item number four up. It's the recognition the local Columbus Cricket Club has been awarded special recognition through GRPA. And I believe that our Parks and Rec Director, Holly Browder, is here. And are they here yet?
They're not here yet.
They're not here yet.
He's not here yet.
Okay, they're not here yet. So I blew the surprise. We'll, we'll let you all know when they do show up. So we'll move on to, we'll move on to the presentations. First is a finance audit report follow-up from Acuitas, presented by Alyssa Kavanaugh with Troutman Pepper Law Firm and Pamela Hefner from Acuitas, Inc. So ladies, if you want to come up, if you'll push that button, we'll get you a microphone. Should be a button on that microphone. If you push that, and I'll get you. Jasha, can we get? There we go.
Is that it?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, we're ready? Hi, well, good evening, everybody. Members of council, Mr. Mayor. I am, my name is Pamela Hefner. I'm here with Acuitas to provide a follow-up to the public report. I think I probably will need a copy then, if it's going to go back and forth. A follow-up to the public report of independent investigation of the revenue division for the city of Columbus. Acuitas, Inc. was engaged by Troutman Pepper on behalf of the city of Columbus to provide forensic accounting services. We were retained to provide an update on the findings and recommendations made by Troutman Pepper in conjunction with Acuitas, published in the public report of independent investigation of the revenue division of the Columbus Consolidated Government dated January 23rd, 2004. That report conveyed the results of an investigation into the city of Columbus's concerns regarding allegations related to the backlog of occupational licenses by the Occupational Tax Department. As far as the scope of what we were asked to do, we were asked to do two things. We were asked to provide a follow-up on the delinquencies that were identified in the report last time, and then also provide a follow-up on the recommendations that were made when we provided that report. As, as it pertains to the follow-up on delinquencies, we were asked to provide an update on the progress made by the tax department on business and alcoholic beverage licenses renewals identified in that report to update any revenue estimate as necessary and to see where they are on the backlog for 2024 licenses. We also were asked, as far as the recommendations follow-up, to interview occupational tax technicians and auditors to obtain a level of understanding of whether improvements have been followed, and to visit the offices, and then to review the list of recommendations made in the report to see whether or not they have been implemented. Now, as I go through this report, there's going to be a date that's going to be significant, and that is September 25, 2023, which is the last day of data collected last year. And then also, as we updated this analysis, we started, we gathered data on the day following, so September 26th through October 7th of this year, so a little bit over a year of follow-up data for some highlights. So in summary, we found that there has been meaningful progress by the tax department toward clearing the backlog of licenses and implementing the recommendations identified in the report. The most significant risk to this progress is staffing shortages. The greatest opportunity to expand on these programs is compliance enforcement. And then, in an area of where there's still work in progress to be done, the area where the least amount of progress has been made is in process automation. And we're going to go into a little bit more detail as we go. In terms of areas of progress, the tax department has instituted many of the recommendations in the report. There has been meaningful progress by the tax department toward clearing the licenses, the backlog of the licenses identified in that report. As it pertains to the backlog of license applications that the tax department had received as of September 23rd, but had, 25th, but had not processed, we saw that most of those applications have been processed. The tax department, with assistance from code enforcement, has made progress on identifying businesses that are no longer in operation, but that have not completed a tax return. And while still a work in progress, policies and procedures and training materials for new employees are being documented and implemented. We received consistent feedback during our interview of the staff that the revenue manager and the tax supervisor, with support from the finance director, are working to improve operational processes and build a healthy team environment. The office spaces are very, are well organized. We did not observe unattended stacks and boxes of applications or returned mail, which we did observe last time we were here in September. A dedicated administrative assistant handles daily mail, which, in our opinion, is critical to identifying and addressing potential issues on the onset. The tax department, in terms of automation, is launching, is about to launch a pilot for online filing of certain excise tax categories to use as a test before expanding to other occupational tax categories. Based on our interviews, employees feel that the tax department leadership is open to feedback and suggestions, and it's our observation that the leadership of the tax department has a vision for sustainable performance. Based on, based on our interviews, the number of daily, what they call problem calls from customers has decreased considerably. And technicians have received positive feedback from customers visiting the tax department window on the improvements that have been put into place. In terms of areas that still need some progress, as I mentioned earlier, the area where the least amount of progress has been made is in process automation. While a pilot for online filing of the excise taxes is about to be launched, there is still significant work to be done to gain the benefits of a truly automated system. The tax department, however, has been assessing EnerGov's capability to identify possible paths forward. As a reminder, for those of you who don't know, EnerGov is the software application used by the government, by some government agencies to manage permitting, inspections, code enforcement, and so forth. It should be noted that the process and policy improvements that have been put into place are serving to mitigate some of the risks associated with manual processes until an automated system can be implemented. In terms of areas of opportunity, we believe that the greatest area of opportunity to continue the momentum on clearing some of these backlog licenses is compliance enforcement. The tax department has reinstated its practice of communicating a list of delinquent business license renewals to code enforcement, which reports the status back to the tax department. To improve tracking the status of delinquent businesses that remain non-compliant, code enforcement and the tax department are collaborating to utilize EnerGov's case management capability. But there is an opportunity for additional collaboration between these two departments to truly, truly optimize this capability. Concerning businesses that are still operating but have remained delinquent despite repeated citations, code enforcement is collaborating with the city attorney's office to implement action steps to enforce compliance. Concerning businesses that are no longer in operation but have failed to submit a final tax return, there is an opportunity for code enforcement to collaborate with the attorney's office to inquire about cost-efficient legal options to enforce compliance. In terms of, in terms of areas of risk, a risk to this progress is staffing shortages, which were listed as one of the primary causes of the initial backlog in the report. From approximately December 23rd, 2023 to approximately June 2024, the tax department was operating with six technicians, three permanent and three temporary, plus a temporary administrative assistant. During this period, the tax department also had a supervisor and an auditor, and this staffing level allowed for significant progress on many operational objectives of the tax department. Upon our receiving authorization to transition some of these temporary positions to permanent positions, it has contributed to turnover. And as of the date of our site visit, the tax department was operating with three technicians, so down from six to three, two of them permanent, one of them temporary, and as well as a temporary assistant, in addition to a supervisor and two auditors who actually started work, their first day was the first day of our, of our site visit on October 7th. Lack of adequate staffing may lead the tax department falling behind on processing license applications, excise tax returns, and may negatively impact the newly reinstated practice of communicating delinquencies to, to code enforcement. So I'm going to get into a little bit more detail now, a, a deeper dive into the delinquencies follow-up, which was the first part of the scope of our update. But first, I want to do a quick review of the terminology that we used in our initial report. So the relevant period of the initial report was January 1st, 2016 through September 25th, 2023. When we talked about backlog, we talked about all late and delinquent business and alcoholic beverage licenses. And I do just kind of want to skip to highlight the difference between what a delinquent license is and a delinquent business is. So a delinquent license for both types of licenses, business and alcoholic beverage, it, a license is considered delinquent if it was due in any prior year but remained unissued as of September 25th. A delinquent business for both types of licenses is when a business did not have a current license as of September 25, 2023. So for example, if a business had not renewed a license since 2020, then this one business had four delinquent licenses for 2021, 22, 23, and 24. To determine the number of delinquent licenses, we had identified the last licensed year in each business that had a valid license renewal, renewal, and then assumed a delinquency for each year after that. So getting into more of the detail surrounding the backlog of the licenses, in the report last year, we identified close to 25,000 delinquent business licenses and 532 delinquent alcoholic beverage licenses coming from about 8,800 delinquent businesses. There has been meaningful progress toward reducing that backlog. In order to update our analysis of the backlog of the report, we obtained a list of licenses issued from September 26th to October 7th of this year, and we performed the follow-up analysis on licenses that were still delinquent as of September 25th. In other words, business and alcoholic beverage licenses that had not been issued since September 25, 2023. Most of the progress achieved came from processing license applications the tax department had received but had not yet processed as of our initial analysis last year. So for example, for license years 2019 to 2024, there were about 1,750 license applications that had been received by the tax department but had not been processed as of September 25th. As of our site visit, that number was down to 83. So from my, and then, what that kind of means is, if you see the top and the bottom, we went, the, a tax department went from about 25,000 delinquent businesses and licenses, delinquent business licenses, to about 18,000. And they went down from about 8,800 delinquent businesses to about 4,700 delinquent businesses, a reduction of about 50%. I know I just threw a lot of numbers at you, so this is an illustration on the progress made by the tax department on delinquent business licenses. And you see at the top, the, the initial 25,000 licenses that were delinquent that were identified on September 25th. Over to the, the lighter shaded are the number of licenses that were renewed. And over to the right are the number of licenses that are still delinquent as of October 7, 2024. And later, I'm going to relate these license delinquencies to the number of actual businesses that were still delinquent. It is important to note, there is a distinction between a closed business and an out-of-business or suspended business. As part of this update, we received updated information on the number of business licenses that were issued as part of formally closing a business, and those are the closed businesses that you see in the lighter shaded box. Those businesses formally closed the business with the tax department. A suspended or out-of-business business over to the right, where you see the heart, the darker shade, is a business that has stopped its operations but has not formally filed the paperwork with the tax department to complete its obligations. For the purposes of this analysis, an out-of-business indicates that the business has a delinquent license. So if you remember, I made a distinction between delinquent businesses and delinquent licenses. The 18,223 delinquent businesses are from 4,700, roughly 4,700 businesses, delinquent businesses. If you see at the top of those 4,700 businesses that are delinquent, about 3,400 of those are assumed to still be in operation because thanks to the collaboration between the tax department and code enforcement, about 1,280 have been identified as being out of business. These 1,280 businesses are required to file a final tax return. It is unclear when these businesses went out of business and how many licenses they are delinquent. The challenge here is sometimes difficult to reach the owner. And then change of ownership poses an increased challenge because a business under new ownership with a new account still has the same address as the previous owner with the previous account number, and the address will continue to flag as being associated with a business license that is delinquent. And when code enforcement goes to the location looking for the owner, it may not, it may or may not be aware of a change in ownership. In instances when there is a change in owners, when that change in ownership is known, it is sometimes difficult to reach the previous owner. So some of these delinquencies, we, we do not have clear visibility into, into which businesses have been sold. But as code enforcement and the revenue department continue to flag some of these businesses, some of that information will become apparent. These delinquencies, whether it's from a change of ownership or whether it's because a business, a business simply closed its operations, should be enforced in, in the same manner, including citation or cost-efficient use of court action when appropriate. In terms of the 3,400 businesses that are still in operation, about 1,000 of those businesses has been, have been investigated by code enforcement. And even though they've been investigated by code enforcement and they've had a visit from them, those businesses remain delinquent. About 2,400 of the 3,400 have not yet been investigated by code enforcement, mainly because they are from businesses that are older, that have older delinquencies, so from like 2017 to 2019. And so it's just, it's just, it's essentially a new list of businesses that they can go and, and monitor for compliance. It should also be noted that about 700 of those businesses are outside Muskogee County and therefore outside the jurisdiction of code enforcement.
Sorry, excuse me just a second. Counselor Thomas?
Can you explain what the 697 are outside of Muskogee County?
Yes.
How does that play into the business license stuff?
Oh, yeah, no, that's your question. So in order for code enforcement to be able to go and, and make a visit to a business, the business has to be headquartered or there has to be a physical location inside of Muskogee County. Otherwise, they don't have the jurisdiction. So an example could be a, a business that has some sort of a service. And they may be headquartered outside of Muskogee County, but then they send employees into Columbus to conduct business. So they have to have a business license in Muskogee County to conduct business here, but there isn't a, a, a physical location where code enforcement can go and issue a citation if they are delinquent. Well, I, I, an example would be like a cer, like a, like a cleaning service, for example. A cleaning service that may be located outside of Muskogee County from a headquarters perspective, but they may send people to different businesses inside of Columbus to do the services. Does that answer the question? Okay, great. Thank you.
Excuse me, one more second.
Sure.
Mr. City Manager?
And Mayor, I was going to say, not only is that a challenge for code enforcement, but local businesses, I want to note, are a challenge for code enforcement. And I, I, and I hate to be specific, but we've been to court four times with Chuck E. Cheese. We've cited them for not having a business license. Chuck E. Cheese. And now we, we've retained outside lawyers to deal with Chuck E. Cheese because they won't get a business license. And so the challenge is not only for out of county, out of town, but some of them are right here in Columbus. And, well, we've been to court, and court will fine them, I'm going to just say $100. Well, they just go back to making pizza and having kids come and play. And then we, we go along and we fine them, we, we cite them again. And so we've been to court, I believe, four times with Chuck E. Cheese. And that's why I'm calling your name because I want to be just like the health department for businesses who don't measure up when they go out and inspect them. They post their scores. And I'm calling Chuck E. Cheese's name because I want them to come get their business license. And so I just wanted to point out, not just code enforcement can only do so much, but it's not just out of county. It's local businesses. Chuck E. Cheese is an example.
Thanks, sir. You can continue.
Yeah, great. So. So that's a, that's actually a very great point. And so it kind of speaks to the fact that there's been 1,000 businesses that have been investigated by code enforcement, but they remain, they remain delinquent. And so as, as you remember, I said earlier in my presentation, we believe that the greatest opportunity for the city to continue to make progress on collecting on some of these licenses is code enforcement and the collaboration between that agency and the tax department to kind of put pressure on these businesses, along with the city attorney's office to find the most effective ways to compel compliance. In terms of the update on revenue, I'm going to spend a little bit of time here. In the report, we calculated the estimated cost of delinquent businesses for the years 2017 to 2023 using two different methods. The average actual gross receipts, that total estimated cost was about 3.5 million. And that estimate was meant to be a floor to what we calculated to be the cost of those delinquencies. The second method was the average estimated cost method, and that total was estimated to be about 6.5 million. And that was meant to be kind of a ceiling to what we thought the esti, or what we calculated the estimated cost of those delinquencies to be. Now, the underlying assumption is that the actual cost was somewhere in the middle, the midpoint. So for reference, the midpoint or the average of those two numbers is 5 million. So, for reference, the midpoint or the average of those two numbers is five million. In each of these methods, the average cost to the city was comprised of delinquencies from businesses that were still open, active, and delinquencies from businesses that were closed. For delinquencies for businesses that were active, we made the assumption that there would be collection efforts, and then the revenue associated with those businesses would be collected. And so, the cost associated with that was really calculated to be the cost money of, the cost, the time value of money between the time the revenue should have been collected and the time the revenue was assumed to be collected. So, for the first method, for example, the businesses that had active businesses, those delinquencies, the full value of those delinquencies was about twenty-one point seven, twenty-one million, again, assumed to be collected, so we thought the estimate was that the loss would just be the time value of money. But there was also a component to that cost, and that was from businesses that were closed. When we did this analysis last year, we assumed that that would be a permanent loss. In other words, any business that was closed, those revenues would not be collectible. So, for that first method, for example, the businesses that were closed, that revenue represented about two point nine million, and we assumed that to be a permanent loss, and that two point nine million is included into three point five million. We have, however, as part of this, as part of this exercise, we've determined that the tax department has made strides towards collecting against businesses that have closed. So, for the purposes of this estimate, we estimate that the average, like the midpoint of the cost to the city of any delinquent licenses that are still outstanding is one point nine million, so a decrease from about five million to about one point nine. And again, it's made up of active businesses, and the total value of that revenue is roughly seventeen million that we are assuming the tax department and code enforcement are going to go get, and so, the cost to the city will be the time value of money between when the revenues are collected and when the revenues should have been collected. But then, we're also assuming that the value of any revenue from closed businesses or from out-of-business businesses, there'll be collection actions against it, and that revenue will be collected as well. So, the time value of money of when it should have been and when it will be collected is the estimated cost to the city.
Excuse me, just a minute, ma'am. Counselor Crabbe?
Thank you. I'm having a little bit of an issue with the fact that you're using a lot of estimated cost, assumed. I would like this report to be based on facts, what has actually happened, not assumptions, not on, you know, estimates, estimates. Do you have that in this report somewhere?
So, I understand, I think I understand where you're coming from there. These licenses have not been collected, so we, I can't give you a cost of the actual cost of these licenses because these have not been collected. So, what we can do... Pardon me?
Yeah.
But you do know a number that has not been collected?
I want to, no, I want to make sure that I understand the point so I can answer your question. So, we have a list of licenses that are still outstanding.
Right.
We don't know how much that revenue to be collected will be because that revenue has not been collected, so all we can do is use a proxy for that number. Estimate what was collected before for those.
We want to hear the number that has not been collected, not an assumption, not what if it is collected, what if, you know, not what if it isn't collected. We want to know the actual number that you have that has not been collected.
Because we don't have visibility to what the revenue for each of those very specific businesses is, we are using an average of what an average license revenue is for what has been collected. So, we know what has been collected in the past, and we're using an average of what has been collected in the past as a proxy to what will be collected in the future. And so, that's what we call an estimate, because we are estimating it based on actual collections in the past. We don't have collections of the licenses that haven't been submitted or renewed because that revenue has not been reported to the tax department by the owners, and that's the issue, right? The issue is that they haven't come in and they haven't submitted a tax return. So, without the actual revenue from the business, all we can do is use history to indicate to us a reasonable proxy for what the future will be. Could be more, could be less, and that is the reason why, if you go back to slide, I believe it's sixteen. Yeah, slide sixteen, you see that there were two methods that we used last year. So, one method that we used was to get the actual revenue from some of the businesses that were delinquent. So, last year, we identified about eighty-eight hundred businesses that were delinquent. The revenue department was able to provide to us actual revenue received for half of those. And so, to your point, that's, that's an estimate of, that gives us the past of what has been collected in the past. And that number was an estimate or a floor of what we thought, a reasonable estimate of a revenue per license would be. We also made some other calculations based on all of the revenue that has been received by the revenue department for all of the licenses during a period of time, and that gave us another estimate that was sort of a ceiling. And so, the number, to City Manager's point, is likely a place in the middle, so the average of those two. So, that revenue might be a little bit higher, a little bit lower, it's just a proxy or estimate based on history.
Thank you.
I think we weren't yet, great. So, that decrease of our estimates, that sort of the midpoint or the average, what we believe the midpoint of the estimate to be, had a decrease from about five million to about one point nine million, largely due to the decrease in the number of delinquent licenses from the combined efforts of the tax department and code enforcement to resolve these delinquencies. For delinquent alcoholic beverages, similar calculations. Last time, we estimated the cost to the agency, to the city, to be about a hundred and eighty-three thousand, and that's down to about fifty-five thousand. From a backlog for two thousand and twenty-four standpoint, the two thousand and twenty-four business license renewals, the tax department has either issued a business license or is actively working with customers to address issues for all business license applications that have been received by the tax department. Any two thousand and twenty-four business license delinquencies are the result of businesses not filing their annual business license application. There are about a thousand businesses that received a two thousand and twenty-four renewal package but have not yet submitted their business license application, and code enforcement is currently investigating those businesses. The, we have been informed by the supervisor that the tax department is on track to complete all received alcoholic business license renewals by the end of the year. Now, I'm going to switch gears to get into more detail about the recommendation follow-up portion of this update.
Yeah, excuse me just a second. Counselor Davis?
I want to go back and touch on some of the things you talked about, that you just talked about. I know you're using the word "delinquencies," but you could substitute that for uncollected as well, correct?
Sure.
Sure. You know, and part of where we're at today is dealing with a lot of the word salad when it comes to the various words that have been used or thrown around in the community, which has caused a lack of understanding of where we're at today, but simply where we're, all we're talking about in all this, and it's been said in public, not once, but many times, we're talking about accounts receivable in the business world, or it's just revenue that's uncollected. You have not, it's unbanked, it's not in the bank, you hadn't collected, it could be anywhere out there in what you're describing, okay? All right, you're doing still, you're doing samplings, right? Are you still basing everything off of samplings in the last investigation on your numbers here?
We, we had a list of licenses that had been identified as delinquent, and we're following up on those specifically.
That was a sampling that you used prior, and you're still looking at those to get your numbers of where you're at today?
I think I'm struggling with the word "sampling."
The numbers from the past, you pulled them together, and that's how you're coming up with your assumptions?
Yes.
Okay. But we're looking at two thousand and seventeen to two thousand and twenty-four. Twenty-four is a concern because of the backlog that it seems to be in what you're calling "delinquencies," it seems like they're still there. We haven't seen those numbers, we haven't had a dashboard update in a while, so I don't really know what's come in. But in all the language that you're talking about over time, do we have any accountability of where that revenue that's being proposed has been collected? Okay? And the numbers we used back a year ago are totally different from where they're at now. You agree with me? They've changed because of the collections and enforcement and going out. It's a moving target, they keep moving.
Correct.
Depending on how successful you are and what you collect. Am I right on that?
Correct.
So, I do tell everybody that all the numbers in the past are gone. They've changed because there's been work or there's been collections, money's come in. Do we have any recollection, do we, do we know where that revenue that's been captured or collected, where it's being accounted for?
You're referring to any license, to the extent that somebody has actually come in and filed a tax return?
In addition to what's being budgeted, that we budget, that we expect to collect, I'm talking about the stuff in the past that we're going out and getting, bringing in.
Right.
Which you're saying equates to millions.
So, any of them, any of the revenue that...
Do we know where that's being accounted for?
That it would have been accounted for in the normal course of business and revenue, however, in whatever revenue account is, that revenue gets booked in the system. I'd have to go back and take a look to see what actual revenue account it goes into, but as the money comes in, it gets booked into either, into either revenue or to the, or until it gets processed. It gets, once it gets processed, it gets booked into revenue.
If it's in the past, it should be counted as excess of budget, and the budget should be amended, correct?
I don't, I'm not sure. I don't, I don't, I'm not sure I follow that question.
It's revenue that's collected, it's additional revenue from the past. We've already budgeted in the past, it should be budgeted and amended to the budget of where we collect additional revenue.
So, you're saying, to the extent that we had a revenue, to the extent that we had a budget, and we may or may not have met the budget last year, if additional revenue is collected now, it should be against some budget? Is that, is that the question?
No, 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 no. I'm saying, the revenue that's been generated from collections, enforcement, and now we're going back and we're trying to go after these delinquencies and get them to pay up.
Correct.
Whatever that amount is, what we're talking about, where that new revenue has come into the city, it's in prior years, we're out of those years, they've already been accounted for, they've already been audited. Where is that new revenue being shown? Where is it being accounted for, actual? Is it all being put from past years into this year, two thousand and twenty-four? Or where is it going? Is it going straight into the general fund? And are we making the amendments to the budget, which we are required to do with additional revenue? Because it's prior years, we're out of those years, you have to amend the budget. That's what I'm saying. Do you know where it's being accounted for?
I don't know the answer to that.
Okay. That's my, she just answered my question, I'm okay.
You don't want an answer?
Well, she answered my question, I'm okay. The two thousand and seventeen to two thousand and twenty-three, you know, the statute of limitations is four years. It's my understanding that you can only collect, you can go back four years and collect. We were told there are certain cases you can go back and try to put pressure, but by the time you pay the litigation cost or the legal cost on it, it's going to be a tremendous amount of money. We will never know what that amount of money is. It's gone. You will not collect it, and it's really not going to reflect in those numbers. Now, you know, you can estimate or average or, you know, or sample, but the truth of it is, it's gone, and you won't be able to collect it. And, but we're still talking about those numbers. My question would be, is there some point in time that we just need to clean the books, get it all out and start all over? Because those numbers are really confusing to the public, and the truth of it is, the majority of that you won't ever collect. It's gone, it's, you know, we're fixing to go into two thousand and twenty-five, there's another year we lost, but we don't know. So, we have to stay current, and what I'm seeing in your current numbers, when you talk about delinquencies, is where we're at today, it's almost the end of the year. People are supposed to already have their applications, and they've got to April first of two thousand and twenty-five to get that in to be valid. But we've got, correct me if I'm wrong, ten-plus-thousand delinquencies maybe, or somewhere in that area still out there that we're dealing with for two thousand and twenty-four?
For two thousand and twenty-four, we have about a thousand, for two thousand and twenty-four, we have about a thousand delinquencies that, where an application was sent out and the business did not come in and renew. And right now, code enforcement is trying to investigate those and go after that. We still have some delinquencies potentially from prior years that are carrying over that also code enforcement is trying to go and go after. So, from a, from two thousand and twenty-four standpoint, any business that has submitted an application, those have been processed, that revenue has been recognized. But you are correct, there is still some work to be done on businesses that have not submitted their tax return.
Senator, sir?
Well, yes, and thank you. I mean, you answered my questions. We got the report, it's what we needed, okay? It's what we needed, it was the right thing to do, and I think you would agree, anytime you go in and do an investigation or an audit, and you come up with a sum of what we had to deal with, you know, eventually you got to go back in and you do an audit update, it's the right thing to do. So, this is good for the citizens' sake of what's being presented. We got it on Friday, and that's okay. None of us got a chance to see it or anything like that, it was a confidential draft, but we got to look at it. There's a, there is detail here, okay? So, I've been working through it, I just wanted, I'm not going to take your time and try to pull that exact number, but I thought there was more delinquencies that we have, maybe it's the sum of some of the years that you're included and brought it up, including two thousand and twenty-four to get to that amount, but it looked like there were still several delinquencies out. Now, we haven't received our dashboards or our updates lately on what that revenue collection is, so I really don't know, but it struck me that there were still a significant amount of delinquencies or uncollected revenue that's still, still out there to be processed.
Yeah, so to the extent that you have, let's just call it a business that has been grandfathered into the fact that they're delinquent, for example, they've been delinquent since two thousand and twenty-three or two thousand and twenty-two, that business is likely going to be delinquent in two thousand and twenty-four. Now, those businesses have been identified, so there is an opportunity to go and do some enforcement on that, but yes, you are correct. So, we have a list of businesses from two thousand and twenty-four specifically, there's about a thousand of those that have not come in. We know what those are, code enforcement is working on it. We have the legacy delinquencies, let's just use that word, we have the legacy delinquencies that we still need to go and put some pressure against to get to pay. Now, once you, once you address those, you're not just addressing two thousand and twenty-four. The good news is you addressed those, you addressed two thousand and twenty-four and twenty-three and twenty-two and twenty-one, to the extent that you have any businesses that have to go backwards into time. So, the good news is that if you hit one business, you can potentially knock out four or five delinquencies all at one time. So, it really becomes... So it, it, it really becomes sort of a manageable number of businesses to go after for enforcement, when you think of them in terms of businesses, rather than this very large number of delinquencies, which is a legitimate number, right? I mean, you want to go after every single license that you haven't collected on since But you have an opportunity to, to, to get a lot of those delinquencies taken care of, as you deal with businesses that have several delinquencies inside of them.
Right, and that, that was the advisement on the line, the investigation report that came out, is to, you know, you need to step up on your collections. And they have, I mean...
Yes.
You know, once you, you start doing something, and you start moving that direction, you know, you, you, you do start reaping some of the benefits, so you're right. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Thomas?
I want to go back to the slide, on the '24 backlog, if you will. The very last one says that we're on track to complete all received alcohol business licenses by December the 31st. Is it my, is my recollection correct that if you are a business that has an alcohol license, you have to submit for a renewal by April the 1st each year? Is that...
No, so the, for, that's a great question. So for business licenses, business licenses, those have to be renewed inside of the year. So for 2024, in order for you to have a current business license, you have to renew at some point in 2024. Now, in order for the business to not be late, it has to submit by April 1st. That's the date you're thinking about. For alcoholic beverage licenses, in order for them to be current, that license has to be renewed the year prior. So for 2025, the alcoholic beverage licenses have to be renewed as of December 31st of this year. And then there is a deadline for the business to submit, so that they're not late in submitting, and I, I, I don't quite remember that date, Director Alexander can tell us, I think it's October 1st? October 1st. So by October? October 31st. So businesses have to submit their alcoholic beverage license applications by October 31st of 2024, in order to have a 2025 license renewed and be current.
And so this, this piece that says that, that we're on track to complete the business, the alcoholic business licenses by the end of the year?
Those are for 2025 licenses.
Those are 2025 licenses?
Those are for 2025, because right now, they are on, they are in the alcoholic beverage license renewal season, if you will. 2024 beverage, alcoholic beverage licenses would have been processed last year. Right now, they're working on the 2025 licenses for alcoholic beverage.
And all of the ones that were there, there for last year have been completed?
To the extent that they have been received by the revenue department, yes. We still have some delinquencies, and those have been reflected in the report. But yes, anything that has been received by the, by the, by the department has been processed.
Well, I do know that last year, we were having quite a time in getting alcoholic business licenses issued and renewed.
Right.
I'm aware of at least one business that it took six months to get it renewed. And are you telling me in this, that that has stopped? That we're going to be on target for December the 31st? That everything that the finance department has on the alcoholic business licenses will be completed by December the 31st?
It has been represented to us that they are on track, yes. Anything that has been received will have been completed by the end of the year.
And do you have any supposition as to why it has taken so long in the past, and now we're going to be right on target?
Well, sure, so in the past, that was the reason for the initial investigation, right? We knew that they were, that the revenue department was very behind on issuing not only alcoholic beverage license, licenses, but also business licenses. That was the whole backlog that we were called in to quantify and to investigate. And so since that report, or since that investigation last year, the tax department has taken step, they, they, they increased their staffing, they have implemented some of the recommendations that we're going to talk about, and they've really kind of put, like I spent a paper, to make sure that they get through that backlog. And it's, and it's reflected in the numbers that we're, that we're reporting on today.
So are you saying that we're going to be on target for both business licenses and alcohol business licenses? And we have enough staff to do that?
They had enough staff to do, they had the staff that they needed to do that. I, I can tell you that right now, they have about half of the technicians to do the work. All, all I can do is just sort of say, they had a certain number of staff during June to December, as they were trying to get through all of this backlog, and now they have about half. So that most definitely represents a risk.
But they're going to meet this December 31st, a month and a half date from now?
It was represented to us that, yes, that they were on track.
It was...
They, the, the, the tax supervisor represented to us, told us, and we don't have a reason to doubt it, that they are on track to finish by the end of this year.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Kogel.
I might be getting ahead of myself a little bit, but I just scrolled through your presentation, and I didn't see the same graph that was in our pamphlet here, where it says, the number of delinquent renewals as of September 25, 2023, which was about this time last year, for 2023 was 6,339, and as of 2024, October 7, that's now 4,657. So even though we've issued 1,033 license, as per the graph, it seems that, like, if all the numbers, for the people who are watching, the, all the numbers are listed from 2017, 18, 19, 20, 21, 22, and 23, and the number of delinquent licenses continues to grow. And I understand from what you've said, that, that this is kind of a, a rolling target, but if I do a little bit of estimation, at, at this point, we're, it's going to take us four or five years, maybe six years, to catch up to evening out that number. And I guess, I guess my frustration is, I'm having a, a little bit of flashbacks from some of my concerns from 2023, when, and you've mentioned it in your report a lot, about the automation of the, of the finance department. And I think I had expressed in 2023, to, to the finance department, and to the, to the group here, that one of our priorities should have been to automate the finance department. And I, and, and I know at the time, we had said we would try to have that done in the first or second quarter of 2024, and that rolled around, and then we had an update during the summer, and we brought up the business license issues again, and the need for automation, and we were told or assured that we were working on it, and our goal was by the end of the year. And here we are, five weeks from the end of the year, and six weeks from the end of the year, and our, and the report says that we are doing a, that we're doing a exercise, I guess, on, or trial to, on, for online filing for, for the alcohol license, and not the business license. And so my fear is that we're going to be sitting here in 2025, having this, exactly the same question, or conversation, except for that we will be another thousand, or another 1,500 business license in, delinquent, because in six weeks, we are hopefully going to be sending out our business license renewal forms the first week of January, and we're going to be, hopefully, having people mail our handwritten business license forms to North Carolina, only to have them mailed back to our mailroom to be processed by hand again. And in the meantime, our business, our inspections and codes office, is going to be chasing around the delinquent business license, businesses, while we could be using our inspections and codes office to do things like cite blight, and clean up other things in our city. And so I think we have a, my frustration, and I, and I wanted to, to voice my frustration, is that I feel like we're almost in exactly the same spot. We might have collected some extra business licenses here. I think it shows that we collected an extra 600 or so, but I think that's because we brought it to light, and we, and we started the ball rolling. But I feel like we're going to have the same conversation in 2025. So I just wanted to voice my concern and my frustration to the council, to the citizens, that this is, this is not what I dreamed of in 2023, and this is not where I thought we would be in 2024, or not where I had hoped that we would be in, in 2004, and certainly not what we were promised in 2024. So those are my concerns.
Yeah, my, my comments would be very brief, but I do have a question. In order for us to be more efficient, I know we talked about automation, and I think, I mean, best practices are very important. So my question is, are we looking at, have we looked at other agencies or governments to kind of benchmark what they're doing to be able to operate more efficiently?
Yes, so that's a great question, and you know what I want to do, someone just want to, because we're on topic, I'm going to skip ahead to, if this comes up, we'll skip ahead, and then, and then we'll double back to make sure that we cover everything. But I'm going to skip to, one of the recommendations that we had was to increase the automation of systems used to process licenses. Absolutely, as I mentioned at the beginning of this presentation, that is the area where the least amount of progress has been made. To your point, to your question, according to the revenue manager, the tax department has contacted other city governments to see how the current system, NRGOV, is being used in other municipalities for automation. It has been, based on the feedback, it appears that any attempts at automating NRGOV would require some software customization of the NRGOV platform. And in talking with the finance director, I mean, there is a, there is an expectation that if this pilot doesn't really work out, there might, they might have to go out to, into an RFP and see if there's another system out there that can fulfill the online filing requirements. So there, there, we did not review NRGOV's capabilities, we can't comment as to that, that's just, that's just not what we were asked to do. But we were definitely asked to see how they're doing in terms of getting, making progress, to see if they've made progress towards getting to automation. And yes, they're doing, they're doing a pilot, it's a step in the right direction, but certainly is not as far along as it would have been ideal for them to be. I mean, that's fair. But yes, they are looking at other municipalities, see how it's working somewhere else. They feel like it probably would require too much customizing of the system for it to really be feasible, the way that it is right now, and they're pursuing avenues.
Yeah, one more question?
Yes, sir.
This will be my last question. From a staffing perspective, I know, know, I, I think I read in here that it was approximately temp staffing, maybe three, two or three? And as you know, there's a revolving door with, with temp staffing, because if they find a, a better opportunity, they leave. So I guess my question is, how do we fix that? Is there any way that we can add more FTEs to the headcount, to be able to retain good, good staff? And I know with temp agencies, there is a, a markup, 30%, 40%, and, but I think if we can incorporate these temps, maybe after they've worked 90 days on a full-time basis, I think that'll help us, because, from a training perspective. Because it probably, I estimate it probably takes about six months to get a team member trained, employee trained, but if they're a temp, you train them and they, they leave, then you're back at, yeah, square one.
Yes, so they, yes. So in terms of retention, that was also, I can, I can flip to that as well, just since we're on topic. If we go to, if this thing can come back up. Increase attention to employee retention and training was one of the recommendations that was set forth in the report last year, because it was identified as an area of definite opportunity, you know, to, to the extent that you have a revolving door, to use your words. It just makes it difficult to really truly gain some momentum. Insufficient staffing is the greatest risk right now to the progress that has been made by the tax department. The uncertainty that is created by relying on temporary positions is not conducive to long-term success. You know, it does not promote a stable, productive team environment. Building a positive work environment is key, I'm, I'm sure everybody can relate to that. The revenue manager reported to us that leadership is implementing programs to build inclusiveness, to raise morale, to move beyond negative feelings about working in the tax department. But turnover disrupts that momentum, I think is what you're trying to get at, right? Building positive morale gets disruptive, and it's a disincentive to seek employment at the tax department. Productivity gets slowed down, and even if you have a training checklist, which the department has developed, a training checklist, it does take about, it's been reported as takes about six months for a technician to be, like, fully self-sufficient. And so when you have turnover created by temporary technicians who seek employment elsewhere, you get yourself into a cycle where you're always either short-staffed or training new people. To, to answer your question about, do we need to turn these temporary positions into permanent positions? I did not, we did not do the analysis necessary to say what the right level of staffing needs to be at what point, but yes, to the extent that the right level of staffing is determined, it, it is a benefit to the department if those are, those are permanent positions. It just, it just builds a, a sense of accountability for the people who are working there, and you reduce the risk for error, because people become proficient, and it just becomes, you know, they're having this sort of vicious cycle, it hopefully becomes a virtuous cycle of people, of, of building a team, increasing morale, and gaining sufficient, self-sufficiency of your employees.
All right, Counselor Tucker?
Yes, I have a few questions. I think I heard you multiple times say a vicious cycle, low morale, probably low pay.
Oh, I did not say low pay.
I know, no, I'm, I'm adding that.
Oh, okay.
Probably low pay. That we have this cycle of people coming in and out, and you definitely going to have a cycle with temp, temp employees. One of the things, and I appreciate, I see Jim Livingston in the audience with the Boy Scouts. I appreciate going on conferences, and I'm going to tell him thank you for this, but CKH Group is a, is an organization, I actually learned about them when I was at the Georgia Association of Regional Commissions in St. Simon's. CKH Group does outsourcing, so the finance part, as far as the business license, they, they're a group out of Atlanta, but they do a lot of this work, and we know that Phoenix City outsources part of their, I think, the business license part. I got to see exactly what all they outsource. But while we was down there, Telfair County had recently, since they was having the same, similar issues that we've been having, what a lot of people are doing, because it is an issue of getting qualified individuals, unfortunately, sometimes the pay is not that good, you know, in local government. So outsourcing this part... So outsourcing this part of the process has helped a lot of, I'm going to say, like Phoenix City, Telfair County. Some of these counties and municipalities actually recoup some of these dollars that they're not getting because they don't have the staff to do the job. And I, like I said, I appreciate being with Jim and being able to be around these individuals and learn this information and see the numbers, you know, on, on big screens where people are benefiting from outsourcing, because we're not the only ones having issues with personnel. You know, that's, that's really the thing that's been, being said over and over and over. People aren't applying for these jobs. They just aren't. And I think as Councilor Kogle mentioned in reference to these numbers and how it's getting worse and worse and worse, and I'm not sure if we actually have more people that may be leaving between today and the end of the month out of the finance department. Don't know. However, if we continue to lose people, it would be good to know if we have any individuals that are on the horizon of putting, you know, their application, resignation in to leave. So that's another hit. And I, I just think that we've been having this conversation for a while, and it is some positive things, you know, in your report, but it is still a lot of work that needs to be done. And the part that we really need is to get the revenue from the businesses. And we're not getting the revenue because we're still behind based on the information that we just got, those numbers. So I know it's, we don't like hearing that word, outsourcing, but outsourcing particular elements out of the finance, especially this part right here. This is, I'm going to say up there at the top with property taxes. You know, this, this is a major organ of revenue that we should be getting it, we're not.
Right.
And I'm not sure if that was one of your recommendations, but that's a recommendation that I've actually witnessed by being around other elected officials throughout our 159 counties in Georgia. That's what people are doing now. They're outsourcing those hard-to-employ positions, especially with high turnover. This, this, this right here is important.
Right. So I am not sure the turnover that is happening right now or that has happened has been mainly the temporary positions, because two of the incumbent permanent positions of the technicians have been with the department for a long time. So the, the rotation that you get are the temporary positions. I can't comment as to whether it's difficult to hire people for those positions.
Because I, so we, we know Yvonne Ivy was out, and she had a replacement. So she's new, she's a new individual.
Since about April.
Right, so we're talking about continuity. Probably a lack of continuity with a, a new person that is there. And I'm, I'm not sure how many other new people, because the numbers that we received, it would be good to actually see how many are more your longevity employees versus your temporary employees versus those new ones? And, and who's leaving? Are we, you know, right now on the verge of having more people leave the finance department, the revenue department? Are, are we having that challenge right now?
For permanent positions, I'm, I'm not, they did not, I mean, nobody in, within the revenue department who was a, who's a permanent position came to us and said that they have any plans to leave. So I couldn't comment as to whether right now any of them have the plans to leave. I'm sure that that is something that the leadership in the department can probably have more visibility to, potentially. From a, have the department been able to make progress? I mean, they, they, they were able to cut down the number of delinquent businesses, like the tracked-down businesses that are delinquent, and that got cut down pretty considerably from the last time that we did this analysis. So there's been some progress from the collection standpoint. Now, in terms of can we outsource collection? That is something that at this point I really can't comment on, because I, I, I don't know, I haven't necessarily asked the questions. I don't, I, I, what you're talking about sounds very intriguing. I, I don't have the background to really be able to give you an opinion on how that would work, what it would look like. The, the, the employees that were there when we did the interviews, there were three employees who were permanent employees who had been there since the last time we were there, so for over a year. Then we did have the revenue manager who is new. She has really been spearheading a lot of change in the department. And so a lot of the turnover was really in the temporary positions. They had hired, when, when we started, they did hire two new auditors, and those auditors are, are, are permanent positions. I would assume they're still there. They're still there, so.
After you do your presentation, I, I think it'd be good to see if we're losing any additional people, because you kept saying vicious cycle.
Retention is important, absolutely. And as you try to build a team, as you try to build morale, as you try to keep momentum, as you try to build on the stability of a team that has been working together for a while, retention is, is really important, yes. Thank you.
All right, Counselor Grab.
Thank you. Kind of to pony on what you were just saying about outsourcing. I was reading about the automization, automation and the synchronization process. And, you know, it's, they're wanting to launch a pilot for online filing with EnerGov, but then throughout your report, it talks about all the problems they have with EnerGov. Like EnerGov's capabilities cannot assess whether it has the functionality to meet the need for the OTD. And, and it, it doesn't, it calculates penalties and interest wrong, and then so they'd have to come back in and fix that. And then we have a, we have a policy that they can't come back in and fix that. And so it doesn't sound to me like EnerGov is the, where we should be launching a pilot. I think we could look into outsourcing, and there might be an organization or a company out there that already provides these types of services for other cities that pay online. And we, so a combination, it could solve a combination of issues. And it would speed up the transformation of getting everything back to normal where they're supposed to be in collections, in making it, if you could make it easy for these businesses to file and their tax returns so that we know that they're out of business. All of these things, if you make it easy for the businesses to do this, then they are going to help us, and they're going to do it. And so I think that this is something that we really need to seriously look into. A company that could, that's already created the wheel, and we turn it over to them.
I, I, I think that that is all fair enough.
We can absolutely explore that and look into that and bring some information back to council. Counselor Kogle?
Do you know what rate we're hiring at? Like when we, like how many, what's, what is our turnover? Are we keeping people around for four to six months or three months? Did you look into that at all?
I did not look into the specifics, no. I can tell you, as I mentioned, three of the employees that were in the office or in the department were there last year. We know that there is a brand-new, they're not brand-new. She's been there since October. There is a new revenue manager. And they've just hired some permanent employees. The turnover that I was able to just observe just through, just through interviews, obviously I didn't see people coming and going, but just through interviews, the turnover was with the temporary employees, and losing some of the temporary employees who are the technicians who work up front.
And our, Mr. City Manager, is our revenue manager still with us right now?
Hang on just a second. Ms. Mayor and Counselor Kogle, I do believe the revenue manager is there, but the revenue manager is going to be leaving.
When is she leaving?
Sometime, I think early December, tomorrow.
Okay. Well, that's a problem.
Is this like tomorrow?
Tomorrow. So you mentioned before that your temp employees take, they're usually there from like four to six months, but they take four, they take about six months to train? Is that what you said?
So I don't know that it is, I don't know that all temporary employees are there four to six months. All I know, right, all I know is that for that period of time, they had temporary employees. But yes, it takes about six months for them to train. And so to the extent that a temporary employee finds employment somewhere else, then they need to replace that temporary employee. And, and then that, then of course, then that starts the process of training them as well. Now, that's not to say that, that, obviously, that's not to say that, that permanent employees don't leave as well, right? Because they, they do have permanent employees who leave for one reason or another. And those employees also need to get brought up to speed. But, you know, regular attrition is something that's going to happen, really in any situation, you're going to have people leaving. That's just normal course of business. It gets exacerbated in temporary position environments.
So the, last year, sometime last year, I know, and the exact software kind of escapes me right now. And that's, and I think it was, don't quote me on it, but I think it was one of, one of our departments that we talk about. It might have been finance, it might have been a tax office. I, I can't remember 100%, but I seem to recall that the last time we dealt with software, one of our, one of our issues is that we had to continually go to training. And by the time we went to training, and by the time we implemented the software, the software needed an upgrade. And then we were out of, then we, then we had to go back to the training to learn the new software. And that just starts this vicious, vicious cycle. So quite frankly, I, I don't have a whole lot of confidence that we can handle the finance department internally at this point. So I'm, I'm going to, I think there's a couple more people that want to speak, but that is my opinion at this point, is that I don't have confidence that CCG can handle the, the, the finance department and the incoming business licenses to a point where we can catch up and get ahead and become a functioning government and be a place where businesses want to come in and do business in Columbus, Georgia. One of the, one of the things that I constantly hear over and over again, and one thing that has really stuck with me for a long period of time, even before I was here, I was speaking to a, to a retired colonel, and he said, "I would rather go and lead my platoon of 300,000 people," or however many, it was a lot of people, "into war again than to do business in Columbus," because he was so frustrated with our business license office and our, our alcohol license office. And I think we have an opportunity right now to fix that and put the fire out and move forward to other things.
Hey, Counselor Thomas?
Ms. Heffner, I just, I, I have been working most of my life in personnel, and there are no permanent employees. There are full-time employees, but there are no permanent employees. None of us are permanent employees. But that's just a little sidelight, if you will. One of my questions is, not counting the leadership, as you are calling them, how many full-time employees are in the finance department?
For the tax department? For the tax, for the, for the, for the tax, because there's also collections. So I was not in collections, right? For the, for the occupational tax department. Full-time employees is, that are approved as a permanent position. It's three, five. Five, two auditors and three technicians are approved to be permanent position.
And are all those positions filled?
The two auditors are filled. There was, the two permanent, the two permanent positions for the technicians are filled. There was one temporary, is it still a temporary position? Director Alexander, for the technicians? One of the positions is still a temporary employee? It was a temporary employee when we were there. The technicians that are working in the office, there were two, there are three, there are three approved positions for, for, for permanent positions, for techni, for technicians. Two of them are filled with full-time employees. One of them was a temporary position when we were there, was a temporary employee. One of them was vacant, but we had, there was a temporary who was hired. Right, right. So two of them are filled, one of them is vacant, but there's a temporary employee in its place. So three technicians, two auditors, and then you've got the leadership.
I'm, I'm trying to remember our meeting last June to pass the budget. And I do not recall that we were, that we refused to create any new full-time positions in this, this current year budget. Is that a correct statement?
Mayor, if I may?
Yes, sir.
I think we sent forward to the council in your budget, I believe, seven position requests for finance. Seven. And those positions were not funded.
But some of those were not, those were not people who were doing the frontline. Those were, several of those were the leadership positions, the administrative positions, if I recall correctly.
Do you recall what they were? Well, why don't you come and tell what they were? But there were seven positions. I believe one was an administrative position, but the other six, I think, were all in revenue.
I don't think so.
They were all new positions.
Yeah, they were new positions.
Yes, they were all new positions. There was a request for one administrative assistant, three tax and license clerks, one revenue auditor, one revenue analyst, and an assistant finance director.
And do all of those people work on the renewal of business licenses and alcohol licenses?
To some extent, yes. The administrative assistant would be there to support the occupation tax division. That position is currently filled with a temporary individual now. We did receive authorization from the city manager to have a temporary employee. But that person does support the efforts of the occupation tax division. They handle the return mail, they handle the distribution of the mail. Some of the recommendations that were made by Acuitas led us to request that particular position. They answer the phones. I mean, so there's administrative work that they do specific to the occupation tax division. Well, specific to the revenue division, actually, because they do also provide some assistance to collections.
To change the subject just, just a bit, I agree with many of my, the people who've spoken about the automation, about the automation issue. We have been hearing spoken about the automation, about the automation issue, we have been hearing this for a long time, over a year, that we're going to automate this and make it better. My question is, who is doing the training, not the training, who's doing the examination of the programs to decide which one we need and how we put that into effect? Is that someone from finance, or is that someone from IT?
Well, it's IT, code enforcement and finance working together.
Well, I guess my, my concern is, we supposedly have an IT department that's top-notch, that could deal with this new system fairly easily, we've been doing this for over a year, trying to get this, this done, and it still is not done. I'm not sure where the breakdown is, but I do know that it, it can be fixed. I tease about, you know, my eight-year-old great-nephew could probably come down here and fix it, you know, he knows more about computers than I do, but we have been dealing with this for a long time, and we've got to get it settled, and we've got to make it a priority. It, it's, if the three departments are doing it, it's got to be a priority for all three departments to get this done, in order for us to collect the money that's owed to us and will be owed to us in the, in the coming year.
I agree.
The other thing that I, I just struck me by this report, our former mayor, Tomlinson, was in office in 2017, and our ending balance for most of the time that she was in office, and up and, up in through the current mayor's beginning term, our ending balance was much lower than it was recommended by finance professionals for it to be. We were looking at 39 days, you know, and we should have been looking at 90 days, and this is part of that, this is part of the reason for that, because we didn't have the money. And I'm, I'm just real, I don't know how to describe how I feel about this report and what's coming out of here, because it's just not, it's not fixing anything. And, you know, you don't have to respond to any of that, I just, I just have to get that off my chest and out, that, you know, we've got to, we've got to do better, we've got to respond, we've got to do better, we've got to get it automated, we've got to get the full-time employees, and if, I, I think if, if somebody were to come to us, either the city manager or the finance, I mean, the director of the department or the deputy city manager were to come to us and say, "We've got to have full-time employees, we can't function anymore on part-time employees," that would be some serious conversation that we would have around this table, but that has not happened. Thank you.
Well, Mayor, I, I think your report is indicating that we need employees, and certainly we will be coming back here at mid-year to say that the positions that were taken out of the mayor's budget, the seven positions, and of course, we'll reassess those positions, but the positions were in the mayor's budget that came forward to the Budget Review Committee, and I think they were scheduled to go forward, and then at the add delete meeting, they were put on the delete and said, "Come back after we get a follow-up report," and we can go and pull the minutes, but I believe that's what it said, but they were scheduled to go forward in the budget and were taken out, seven positions. And so, those positions have been requested, and we're ready to request them tonight. I think your report recommends positions.
Our report recommends, and we'll, we'll go through it if you want to in detail, our report recommends that the administrative assistant is definitely a critical position that is protecting against, like with, that is adding segregation of duties, adequate controls to the department's operation. Our report also says that having the right level of permanent positions.
Full-time.
Filled by full-time employees should be, that the priority should be to transition from temporary to permanent. As to the level, the number, the, how many that is for the council to decide, for Director Alexander to, to, to assess. But our recommendation in our report sort of indicates or highlights the fact that having an environment of, of managing the department with temporary positions, with positions where an employee does not have a full-time job, a full-time employment with the agency, is not conducive to a stable work environment.
So, so I do recall, Council Davis, you said, "Once we go through a review, that we'll come back and revisit positions," you said that at some point, yeah.
Yes, we've got several people queued up, sir, I'll get to you in just a moment. Well, he did, I'm calling Council Chambers.
I'll, I'll yield my comments.
All right, Council Davis?
Thank you, Mayor. That's right, Ms. City Manager, there, there are several substantial reasons why we chose to take a look at where we're at at that point in time, and that's why we're here today. We've got an audit update, I want to remind everybody, this is an audit update, and it's a report, what it reflects. I do agree with my colleague about staffing, the reoccurring problems, this is not something that happened in this past year, it's been going on for a while. There's a lot of emphasis being placed on temporaries, okay? And I want to speak to that. You did in your report, you talked about a lot of interviews, you interviewed the revenue manager, you interviewed the technicians, I guess you interviewed some few other people, is that where you got your information about the temporaries?
Correct.
Okay, well, I think that, first of all, we budget at full staff as we have every year, full staff positions, the reason we're using temporaries is because we can't hire anybody, we don't have anybody in those positions, they're helping us, they're helping us deal with the problem. Now, if they come and go, I can't help that, but there are agencies out there that you can bring in on a temporary basis, and they are there for hiring, if you want to hire them. I mean, I can't speak to that, but I do know there's agencies out there. I don't know why temporaries leave, but you're putting a lot of emphasis on temporaries, which I think i- in this report, you cannot highlight that without looking at the other side of the equation, the actual employment on the year. I took the liberty last week to get some information, and the information's not in this report, but I'm gonna read it to you. Employees hired in that department, I'm assuming this department, for the last year, there have been 22 employees hired, four have retired, two have retired and they were rehired part-time, nine resigned, one rehired after resigning, eight never reported to work after they were hired, it says, but then others transferred, three transferred to other departments, five were dismissed for calls, and discipline actionary, disciplinary actions were on six, were a total of 35 employees, that's full-time employees. So, if you had this information that I have, would your report reflect different, as far as how you're putting a lot of emphasis on temporaries?
I'd have to understand the, if, if this is the entire finance department, is it just the operational tax department?
It's the OTD department.
The operational tax department, I'd have to take a look at it and, and potentially, yeah.
That's the entire department. It's not, it's not just revenue, yeah.
Well, I know what I specifically asked for, and a lot of it is reflected in that department, Ms. City Manager, so my point, my point is, that information needs to be looked at as well, you did, and you took the word of people in the department, and we're putting a lot of emphasis on the temporaries, this is all, it's in public. I don't think that's the issue, because we're bringing them in for help, we can't, look, full-time employees are leaving, as you just stated.
Right.
They're coming in for help, and we gave the approval, the council gave the approval for the staff, the, the executive management, to go out and get as many temporaries as they can to fill those spots, and that's what they were supposed to do, but we were not going to approve any additional full-time positions until we did an audit update.
Right.
To find out where exactly we are, and it's prudent, that's wise, and that's what you're supposed to, you're an auditor, you know that's what you're supposed to do before you just start throwing money in, so no corporation or business will do that. So, I disagree with the emphasis being placed on temporaries as an issue to problems in that department, I think it's a re-incur, when I look at it, okay, and, and granted, look, there's logic to everything you're saying, yes, if that was just the only component you're looking at, there's logic to what, what you're saying, and it is true, but you didn't have the other side of the equation, and you got to look at that, when you combine it, you've got reoccurring staffing issues which, which point to a greater.
Right.
Issue, and it comes under the heading of management.
Right, I, I understand the, the point that you're raising, and there is always going to be attrition, that's absolutely correct, people come and go just through a normal course of business, I completely agree with that. The, the number of employees as we're talking, the employees that I interviewed and that are part of this report are the technicians and the auditors. The technicians, it's three technicians and two auditors. Of the three technicians, two of them had been there since the time I was there before, so only one of them really sort of circled, cycled out. Of the auditors, one of those auditors was there before she was simply promoted to supervisor. So, the only, there was only, there was only attrition there of one auditor who moved to a different department. So, what you're saying is correct, but what I looked at, I didn't look at the entire division, I didn't look at the entire department, I looked at only the technicians and the auditors, and there was not that level of turnover for those positions alone. There was some turnover, obviously, attrition happens, but it wasn't the level of turnover that was, that you just described, because without looking at it, that sounds like it was for the broader department, not just for the three technicians and the two auditors.
I think you understand, there's been a lot of emphasis that's been placed on temporaries,
Yes.
and it almost points to things saying that's the issue, it's not. And there's enough data and enough information, there's enough facts that show that it's a reoccurring problem.
That's right. My report says that it contributed.
Were only brought in, the temporaries were brought in because we could not fill positions.
That's correct.
We couldn't fill positions, we brought them in as a way to start getting ahead of the game.
Right.
And to solve some of the, the crisis in filling those needs.
Yep, I understand.
I think that, in what the conversation we're having, that, I don't think that goes away tomorrow, just because you put temporaries in there or you replace, replace them, because then the question becomes, then why haven't you replaced them? Why haven't you been able to hire anybody full-time? And we know a lot of them have just gone right across next door over to the tax commissioner's office, but I don't know why.
Right.
We don't do exit interviews, so, you know, I, I want to make that clear, because the public's watching this, and it just seems that that becomes a continuous matter of conversation around this table, and that's not the whole picture, and you've got, in order to, to talk at the level we are, you got to look at the full picture, the whole picture.
I understand.
And you didn't have the information and the facts, I did, because I asked for it last week, I got it today, so, I, I'm not trying to blindside anything, but, you know, the, the, if it was looked at in that comparison, I think maybe it would have reflected differently.
Right, I, I understand, my, my report says that that is a contributing factor, not the whole factor, that's, it's a distinction, and it's important one, yes, it contributes, it's not the whole picture, I agree, but the picture that I saw, or that, or what we interviewed, what we were really focused on, is on the very, very narrow set of employees who work in the department, the technicians and the auditors.
And, and that's about, I think, nine people in revenue, Mayor, and 35 would be the whole entire finance department, every division in that department.
Is there nine or 10?
Is it? 10 positions, yeah.
All right, Council Kogel?
Look, I, I think we've, I know we're not really at the end of, of the presentation per se, but, you know, basically, we did get the, the report on Friday and have had a lot of chance to read it over, and I think, I mean, I think in here, there's a lot of, there's a lot of good, but there's a lot of, well, there's, there's some sugar on top of the salt, we'll just, we'll just put it that way. And so, I think, after a lot of this discussion that's been going on, and, I mean, I've voiced my concerns with not having the confidence that the finance department can handle this 2000, at least 2025 coming up, I, Mr. City Attorney, I'd, I'd like to make the motion for a resolution that we look into outsource, or that we outsource, put together an RFP for outsourcing the revenue department for, as soon as we can get that RFP out, sooner than later, that would be like baseball fast.
May I add to that motion?
Yeah, there's a motion and a second, does this, to the motion?
I would say that. Well, that's what I was going to request, is allow the city manager to look at a smooth transition and what it would look like through an RFP to outsource the department.
The revenue division.
Be OTD.
Yeah.
The OTD only.
Thank you specifically.
And we got to look at it, okay, where we're at right now, and, and look, the report, and I'm so sorry, I mean, you, you want to continue and, and update us, but what I'm seeing is, there's a continuous exhaustion of our work capabilities, our employees, our, our human resources to, to do this, whether, several, there's several entities involved here, and it, and it doesn't, it looks like it's going to continue, and we just need to look at how we can become a little more productive as possibly, and allow those other people to do their jobs and be more productive and efficient and effective in what they're doing. Right now, they're, they're trying to tackle this problem, and, and it's just going to, it may get a little better, a little bit, we hope it gets a little better, we can work on it, there's still some, some things that, that are question marks here, but we, we've got to look at that, and, and I'm in full agreement with the city manager, a resolution requesting you to look at a smooth transition and outsourcing the, the OTD department.
I mean, I really don't need a resolution, Mayor.
Yeah, we'll just bring, we'll just bring back.
You know, and, you know, outsourcing is, is something communities, city, county governments do, I mean, I heard Council Tucker speak to it, and so I have no problem with an RFP to outsource the revenue division, in fact, you know, I do want the, the finance director to speak, I think she has about eight slides, and I think in her slide, we talk about outsourcing the collection piece, because, you know, our code enforcement officers, they have full-time jobs, and so what they're doing in their spare time, if you will, they are knocking on the doors of checkered cheese and others, they're going to court, spending time in court, when they ought to be out enforcing some of the things I hear from you about, overgrown grass and junk vehicles and everything else, so they have those full-time jobs, and so, but yet, they're knocking on doors, trying to get people to pay who know they ought to pay. You know you're selling hot dogs and pizzas, but you won't renew your business license. They- They're not, they're, they're not, our, our people are not, you know, I mean, they have a badge, but they're police officers, you know? And, you know, they're not closed because of due process. We've, we've, we go to court four times and they get fined, and now we've got high-dollar lawyers that we're paying to go to their corporate to make them do right. I mean, we're paying lawyers, City Attorney. You know, and so when you ask, you know, our enforcement officer can only do so much. And so when you got a thousand businesses out there who won't comply, and we take them to court over and over and over again, and they're still selling stuff, you know, and so I don't need a resolution to do an RFP to talk about outsourcing a component. You know, we can simply do it. And, and I'm willing to do an RFP and, and look at, because, you know, I think they're tired of chasing people.
I was planning on bringing that back then.
Well, I mean, it's, you know, it'll take a little time to draft an RFP, but, you know, we will get to it.
Yep, Councilor Chambers?
So I, I mean, I'm, I'm all about, I don't think outsourcing is a bad thing. I think it's an opportunity to streamline processes and again, work more efficiently. Only thing that I'll, I'll state is, if we do decide to go that route, the existing employees just need to make sure that we have opportunities for them. So just want to make that note.
Yeah, we're talking about ten people, yeah.
All right, Councilor Davis?
No, I agree, and I think looking at those trends, that's why I said a smooth transition to include Counselor Chambers, what he mentioned, the, the other thing too, I just want to add to it, is the automation, we should already be digitized and our citizens are demanding it, they want it. And I don't think this plan is going to get us there anytime soon. And I'm starting to add the dollar signs up of software enhancements and changes and training and going to Atlanta and all over, and it, we're not there. You know, I know there's some stuff on the horizon, but it's like Counselor Kogel said, are we going to be in 2025, '26, '27? Are we still going to be having this conversation? You know, we may make a little progress, but we're still going, probably going to be playing catch-up. So I think we, for the sake of our city and moving forward, we really need to look at it. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilor Kogel?
You might need, not need a resolution, and, and that's fine, but, you know, I'm into setting goals and I think, you know, council would like to know if there is an appropriate amount of time so that we're not chomping at the bit and wondering when we're going to see this on, on an agenda? If it's going to take three months, if it's going to take six months?
I, I, I'm telling you, we're going to work hard to get it done as quickly as possible. I mean, you know, we're getting, we're getting into the holiday season and people are going to work hard, we're short staff. And so we're going to work, you know, I don't know if it's going to be thirty days, but we're going to do it as quickly as possible.
First quarter?
I, I think certainly, within the first, prior to the end of the first quarter, I, I don't want it to take that long.
Okay.
I mean, I'm talking this, I mean, I hope we can do it, do an RFP in thirty days, I mean, I don't know. But we'll, we'll do it as quickly as possible.
Thank you.
And Mayor, I don't know if you want-
We've got somebody else, Councilor Hakey.
I'll just be real quick, thank you, Ms. Mayor. Listen, Mr. City Attorney, just a quick question. Can we put padlocks on businesses that won't, won't pay their taxes, won't buy, won't pay their business license?
No, what the Georgia case law says is you can file a civil action
Okay.
to force compliance, sort of like an injunction action.
Okay.
Force compliance, make them come down, get their license, pay up any back occupation tax, and that's a last resort. And of course, that's in the works for Chuck E. Cheese, we've gotten their attention
I like your idea.
with a letter, so hopefully they're going to be, hopefully they're going to be here.
I, I, I was, I just wanted to ask that question for the public because it was always my thought process, if they, if they're not getting to buying their business license, put a padlock on the door, don't, don't let them operate. I mean, that was just my thought, so, I don't know.
Thank you.
Well, you can do a padlock under certain criminal circumstances, but not, this is the way to do it. Get an order from the court, like an injunction. And hopefully, we're not going to have to do that because we've gotten their attention.
So Mayor, I don't know, you don't, I mean-
Not sure where you are in the presentation, or where you need to go back to, or-
Slide nineteen.
Okay.
Let's see, nineteen, oh, I got it, never mind. So we finished going through the update on the delinquencies and where we are on the backlog, and I'm about to switch gears into the recommendations follow-up. As I, as I mentioned at the beginning of the presentation, part of what we were asked to do was to perform interviews. So we interviewed the leadership, which is essential, well, Director Alexander, the revenue manager and the tax supervisor. And then we also interviewed technicians and auditors. We asked employees about the state of the office, whether they had feedback about the changes implemented since the time of our last visit, and any improvements they observed. Through these interviews and our own observations, we obtained an understanding of whether improvements have been made to process delinquencies. And the feedback was actually largely positive from the employees in terms of implementing recommendations. The office spaces, while were organized, where they were not last time. During our site visit in 2023, we observed unattended stacks of boxes of license applications returned mail. We observed stacks of business licenses waiting to be processed. There were no such stacks during the site visit. We did not observe unattended boxes of license applications or returned mail. There was one vacant office with overflow documents. We would just recommend that maybe that room gets locked until all of that can be either shredded or filed away just to add some additional security. These, this is the list of the seven recommendations, we've touched on a lot of this just in the past several minutes as we've been discussing. I'd like to note that the observations that are in the pages that are about to follow are just an excerpt. The full observations and recommendations can found in the report that you each got copies. So the first recommendation was to comprehensively review and overhaul policies and procedures related to the issuance of license and the collection of treat, of, the collection and treatment of licensed revenue. Policies and procedures, as well as training materials, are currently being updated or documented, including procedures for employee performance reviews. And then to improve communication, bi-weekly division meetings have been implemented to discuss updates of the policies and procedures. There's always an opportunity for improvement. In terms of opportunities for continued improvement, we would just say that there were varying levels of awareness of any updated policies and procedures. And given that these update, updates are meant to be kind of iterative and, and to continue to happen in an ongoing manner, we just recommend a mechanism for ensuring communication and acknowledgement of any existing and future policies that, that should just be implemented. We note that the policy that interest and penalties cannot be waived appears to have been very well documented and communicated to leadership and staff. But that policy document that details how and when penalties and interests should be assessed does not specifically say that the interest and penalties cannot be waived, and we just recommend adding some knowledge, adding some language to the policy just to add clarity. Operationally speaking, it's clear the employees know that they're not supposed to, just having an update to the policy, just to clearly specify that. And then finally, the, the policies that checks cannot be held for more than three business days appears to have been well documented and communicated. In addition, disciplinary measures have been taken against employees who violate this, this policy, which provides evidence that the leadership is monitoring for compliance. However, given the importance of safeguarding these assets, we just recommend that leadership considers instituting some sort of a random compliance audit to reinforce the commitment to safeguarding these assets. We've talked a lot about this, increased monitoring and enforcement of late and delinquent licenses. I mean, that's a lot, that's a big part of the reason why we're here and we're doing this report. The OTD has reinstated the practice of sending courtesy delinquents' letters to businesses. In 2023, the tax department mailed approximately 3,600 letters to businesses with delinquent licenses from 2020 to 2023. And then this list was forwarded to code enforcement. Then code enforcement reports back to the revenue department. And then the revenue department does any follow-up that they need to do. As technicians encounter businesses that have not come into compliance, and we've talked a lot about that, like repeat, sort of repeat offenders, a communication is sent back to code enforcement and then they open a case in entergov. And then as of the date of this update, the tax department had informed code enforcement of approximately 850 businesses and operations that have not come into compliance. So these are not businesses, this is, this are not licenses that have been sent to the tax department and the tax department haven't processed. These are tax, these are, these are licenses where the, where the business has not submitted their tax return to the tax department. In August of this year, the tax department mailed approximately 1,600 courtesy letters to businesses that had not submitted their business license renewals as of 2024. As of the date of the update, the tax department had processed about 600 of the 1,600 delinquent business licenses, suggested that, suggesting that the combination of courtesy letters and code enforcement is an, is an effective way to, to get compliance. The code enforcement, code enforcement is currently investigating any remaining 2024 delinquent licenses. We've talked a lot about this in terms of, of opportunities for continuity, for continued improvement. Code enforcement or compliance enforcement is definitely a big opportunity. And right now, the revenue department, code enforcement and the city attorney's office are working to, to get as far ahead of this as possible. Automation and synchronization, we talked about this already, we touched on this, absolutely, that is the area of the greatest opportunity, like where, where, where the least amount of progress has been made. And absolutely, it is an area that needs a lot of attention because we, we, we just reiterate the, the benefits to be gained by increasing automation and synchronization of systems and processes, as we communicated in the report. Given that there is a propensity for error using manual processes, and it, and it takes longer when processes are manual. I, I, I hear the council's comments on the, on the matter and, and it is definitely the area of the least amount of progress and an area that should have a lot of emphasis. We talked here, we talked about this too. The fourth recommendation that was in the report last year was to increase attention to employee retention and training. We, we talked a lot about that. To the extent that the, the, the revenue manager has reported to us and we've confirmed through interviews of other employees, the leadership team is implementing programs to build inclusiveness, to raise morale, and to, to try to get past any kind of negative feelings about working for the department. So absolutely, retention is an area of emphasis and some opportunity to, to improve. Increase, the, the next area of, of our recommendations was to increase payment tracking, control, separation of duties, and security. The tax department has implemented many of the recommendations to safeguard against misappropriation of payments. Due to the operational constraints, the tax department staff, who processes a license or excise at the window, sometimes also, also collects the payment. But to control for this lack of segregation of duties, the, the current policy is for the revenue manager and the supervisor to review the daily closeouts, which serves as a monitoring control to safeguard against asset misappropriation. As, as, as far as opportunities for continued improvements, when it comes to segregation of duty and control of assets, deposits should not be made by someone with license or excise tax processing responsibilities. Given short, shortages of staff, when it's all hands on deck and everybody is processing licenses, it is possible for it to happen that someone who processes a license or an excise tax also does the deposit. Until the tax department can get fully staffed, it should be considered that an alternate person, such as a finance department makes, the finance director makes the deposit, or that the revenue manager refrains from processing licenses to maintain segregation of duties. The cash handling, another, another opportunity, just for clarity, is that the cash handling policy requires checks to be endorsed on the day they are received. The tax department staff, however, waits to restrictively endorse the check until they are deposited, but no longer than the three days, according to the policy. Now, the reason the staff waits to endorse the check is in case there's an issue with the application and the check needs to be returned to the customer. And, and this is fine, except that the cash handling policy should just be updated to reflect this operational procedure. Really just clarity, more than anything else. This, the, the next recommendation was to comprehensively review and overhaul the handling of mail. The tax department has created an administrative assistant position responsible for handling, organizing, and distributing mail, in addition to promptly researching returned mail. The tax department has implemented most recommendations to appropriately handle and manage mail. As, as an opportunity for continued improvement, and I think that someone touched on this about entergov, when a customer has multiple addresses in this profile, there is inconsistency as to the address that entergov selects when communications to customers are generated. So we, we just recommend following up with entergov to investigate how it determines which address to select. I mentioned this earlier, in our opinion, the administrative assistant is a critical position and the council should, should strongly consider approving this as a permanent position because it helps to, it helps to keep segregation of duties. And then finally, our last recommendation in the report was to revise the system for detecting, monitoring, and following on delinquent excise taxes. The tax department is about to launch a pilot for online filing. So that is an area where they're going to continue to look at, at following up on, on, on excise taxes. But however, it has been the established policy as of the date of our report that businesses, that businesses that operate under an alcoholic beverage license must pay all their excise taxes in full before being issued an alcoholic beverage license. For 2025, this is a new policy, the tax department will also require businesses that owe excise taxes to pay any outstanding balances before being issued a business license, which should help keep excise taxes current. During our, during our interviews, it was evident that a lot of focus is being placed on ensuring that excise taxes are current. Tax leadership has issued a mandate that excise taxes must be processed within the three days as stated in the cash handling policy. And that is all for my prepared materials. I, I'm happy to answer any additional questions that haven't been addressed as of this time.
Councilor Davis?
I really want to thank you for coming and presenting to us and working with us.
My pleasure.
You know, this is kind of in our backyard, and when you come into it, it's, you never know what's going to happen, right? But, but you've been, you've been gracious and kind. Thank you for the time and the work and effort that you put into this, this will always be helpful. So we can use this, whether we are in transition or not, it gives you direction, which is, which is good. So we really appreciate you doing that and being patient with us. As City Manager, I'd also like to say, as we, as we work on a, you know, looking at a, you know, outsourcing and making a smooth transition, there's got to be, I think we agree, there's got to be a smooth transition just by the nature of what the office does and what it's doing right now. I think it's reflected in the report, there's a couple of positions, I believe, that, that state it, that, that is needed and could help. I would also like to ask you at this time, that you consider what you need during that period, because I'm not sure how long it's going to take us, hopefully- Hopefully, as some of the council members have stated, that we can expedite this and move along, see what it's going to look like. I mean, we got to see what it's going to look like before we move in that direction. But, we got to do that, but we got to stay on track at the same time. I don't know what you need, it was stated, there's a couple key positions here, but if it's on the temporary side, whatever it is, you need to let us know so we can keep that going, and what that's going to take. I don't, you know, personally believe that it's, you just go out and just start opening the floodgate and, and bringing on new personnel, but there is, I would, I do recognize in order to, where we're at, that there needs to be, you know, there, there need, there needs to be some help there to keep it moving until, until we determine, and, and move it in, and moving in the right direction, not losing ground. I think you understand what I'm saying. So again, thank y'all for coming and spending time with us, really, really appreciate y'all doing this. Not a lot of people like doing it, but.
Thank you.
We've, we've enjoyed working with you.
Same here. It was a pleasure. Thank you for having us.
Let me thank you as well.
Thank you.
And Mayor, I, I would like for the finance director, I think she has eight slides, and she can go through them quickly, but I would like for her to share where we are. I know that it was said that we've not done an update in a while, and we have not, so if you'll come.
I think that's appropriate.
Yeah.
Ladies, thank y'all very much for your, for your time.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Mr. City Manager, Mr. City Attorney. Just a couple of points of clarification as they pull up the PowerPoint presentation. One of the, I was trying to make notes so I can respond to some of these things, but I mean, in terms of the revenue, the tax revenue, that's recorded in the year that we receive it. So any revenue from delinquent businesses, now that we're in fiscal year 25, would be recorded in fiscal year 25. So I just wanted to make that point of clarification. You know, and obviously with the staffing, you know, people leave for very personal reasons. I know it was mentioned here about some of the people that are leaving out of the finance department. I know you've received a report. It was mentioned specifically about the revenue manager, and, you know, obviously she's leaving for a very personal reason. I do wish her well. I wish that she was not leaving, because I do feel like she's made a lot of impactful changes, bringing us a level of professionalism, structure, and accountability in the division. So we'll definitely miss her. And in terms of the 22 people hired, 14 of those people were temporaries, and all of those temporaries were in the occupation tax division. So, oh, and then, as, as relates to the alcohol licenses, this time last year, Counselor Thomas, we'd only issued 20 alcohol licenses, and so far this year, we've issued 106. So we are trying to desperately meet that target of, and, and, and we are on track of meeting that target of issuing the 25 alcohol licenses for those businesses that we have. So the update that's here tonight, obviously, this is a fourth quarter update. It was due in September, but it was pushed pending the compliance audit that just happened tonight. Obviously, we're continuously reviewing and updating our operational policies as, and procedures as mentioned by Acuitas. As of November 1st, I would say that we are live with our Civic Access Self, Civic Access Self-Service Portal, or CAS, is another, is an acronym that we like to refer to it. The CAS portal allows online remittance of excise tax payments. Right now, we're live with our mixed drinks, which is the 3% liquor tax that restaurants and other businesses that serve liquor have to pay to the city every month. We are hoping to implement the online tax remittance for our hotel motel taxes. Our hope is that we'll have that ready by the 1st of December, and then we'll follow that with the remaining excise taxes. Conducting weekly meetings between the finance department, the inspections and Code Department, as well as the IT Department, and just so that you have some information in terms of the CAS system, I really just like to show you very quickly where, where that is and what that looks like. So, Mr. King, if you could switch to the computer there. Okay, so on the city's homepage, that's what you were seeing. Oh, there we go. Okay. The city's homepage. If you go to the top banner here under business and scroll to the licensing and permitting portal, this software that we utilize, the entergov software, is a software that is shared by both the inspections and Codes Department, the planning department, as well as the Business License Office. But from this website, you can register to, you would click here to register your account to access your online tax remittance. That's the only thing that we're currently live with. This is the same system website that we would utilize for the online renewals. But what's a good feature about us going live with this online tax remittance is that you can also search records. That was a functionality, capability, I guess I should say, that people were asking for, and you can search by business name, you can search by address, and what it'll do is pull up all of the licenses that were issued for that particular business with some very general, very public information, all the information that is available on the business license itself. So I did just want to show you all that information so that the public is aware that this new functionality in terms of license lookup is available, free of charge, from the city's website. You can switch it back, Mike. So in terms of licenses processed, this is through week 46. We have, again, six more weeks left in calendar year 2024. We've processed over 9,300 licenses. This is 2024 licenses, prior year licenses. Over 9,300 licenses have been processed by the Revenue Division. Out of the 9,300 licenses, just over 7,700 are specific to calendar year 2024. This is an 11% increase of where we were in week 46 in 2023, where we just processed over 6,900 licenses for that particular year. So just a quick update in terms of the courtesy delinquent notices, those were mailed out in August. After the mailing, we still had roughly 1,100 accounts that were turned over to code enforcement in September for non-renewal of their licenses. As of last week, November 13th, code enforcement has advised that 202 of those businesses are actually out of business. This has been confirmed by the code enforcement officer. 22 citations have been issued, 56 warnings issued, the warnings only if the business owner wasn't available to be served. 179 of those businesses are now in compliance, 175 are out of our county, so they're out of the jurisdiction of code enforcement, and there is 461 accounts that are remaining to be visited. The goal for code enforcement is to resolve all cases by the first of the year. So in terms of the revenue, this is just a quick snapshot of the revenue collections for occupation tax revenue over the past several years, going back to FY '20, where we were at about 15.5 million. Where we are projecting we'll end FY '24 as we come to the end or to the, a close of our FY '24 audit, just over 23.8 million in revenue, and thus far in 2000, FY '25, just over $2.7 million. The occupation tax revenue averages about 9% to 10% of all general fund revenue, so not quite up there with the sales taxes or the property taxes, but roughly 9% of the general fund, of all general fund revenue is derived from occupation taxes. So in terms of the personnel, as it was mentioned here tonight by the city manager, there were positions included in the mayor's recommended budget but not approved by the Budget Review Committee. Those positions are listed here. Again, the administrative assistant, there were three, licensing tax clerks, a revenue auditor, an analyst, and an assistant director position. The, the city manager has authorized temporary staffing for some of these positions. We're asking at some point soon that reconsideration be made for these positions to be permanent. Obviously, there was some additional discussion here tonight where, you know, the council desires to go in a different direction, but nevertheless, we will, you know, hopefully continue to make a valiant effort with processing the license renewals with the staffing levels that we have, and then obviously further reviewing and realigning duties and responsibilities as we implement new processes. So for 2024 and beyond, the finance department will continue to process license renewals and follow up on problem cases. Will continue to provide those delinquency notifications to code enforcement. We currently do so every week, and thus for those businesses that we are made aware of that may be operating a business that are, and they're not currently on our radar in terms of being delinquent because they never had a license with us. We obviously consider outsourcing delinquent license enforcement, or possibly hiring additional code enforcement staff. I think the city manager touched on that. We'll obviously continue implementation of our online excise tax remittances. Like I said, we are live with our mixed drinks as of today, and we have businesses that have been utilizing that online option. We'll continue to work towards implementing online license renewals for the upcoming year. This process will require some updates to the city code. One of the things in particular that, in surveying other communities that we found is that no one offers the ability to pay the occupation tax on a quarterly basis. So far, we've found it to be really unique to Columbus. That is a little prohibitive in terms of us being able to offer the online renewals, so that would definitely be one of the things that we would like to change. And then obviously, we'll continue to review policies and procedures and provide progress, progress updates to the council, city manager, and mayor. And that is all that I have. I'll be happy to answer any questions if you have them.
I'm sure to be any. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Finance Director. Appreciate that. Mayor, I think that's all on that subject.
Okay. All right. Before we call up CFE MS, I'm, I know we've got a lot of people patiently waiting, but I'm going to call up our Parks and Rec Division.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council, Mr. City Manager, Mr. City Attorney. We appreciate we will be very quick tonight, but we felt that it was very important to our department and to the city to, to welcome and to showcase what an amazing group we have here in Columbus with the Cricket Association, Mr. Nadine Khan, and the tons of volunteers that he has that have contributed to our local cricket association and the cricket field. As a result, we nominated them this year for the Georgia Recreation and Parks Association Volunteer of the Year Award, and they were selected as this year's winner. So we wanted to make sure that they receive the recognition that we know that they are due for that award. I'm going to very briefly read you part of the submission, just so you can see what was submitted, but it goes on to say, Columbus Cricket Association contacted our department in 2016. There was a need for cricket here in the city of Columbus. Although we had difficulty finding a field, a field was found at Alexander Park, which is located behind Pop Boston. They worked diligently as their organization to find that proper space and to establish an MOU with the Columbus Parks and Recreation, so that that field would be home to the Columbus Cricket Association. Their volunteer group turned a, what was then a rundown baseball field into a state-of-the-art cricket field, complete with a pitch and all things that are required for the game of cricket. Many weekends, you can go there when they're hosting games and tournaments. It is packed. We have people from all over the state of Georgia, as well as other locations, that come to our city to participate at our cricket field. So huge kudos to this group. But not only did they do that, they did most of this work on their own, with, with little help from the city, with little help from Parks and Recreation. They often will come and find things that are vandalized, or have been graffitied, or have been torn up, and that is never a hurdle for them. They continue to surpass that and bring us right back to the, to the standard that they have created here for the city of Columbus. Through their work and diligence in bringing cricket to our city, which started again in 2016, it continues today to be one of the best things that we have been able to bring on as a new sport. So just wanted to say huge thank you to everyone as part of the Columbus Cricket Association, and make sure that they are recognized for all their hard work and all that has been done to bring this sport of cricket to the city of Columbus.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, City Manager, for your support, always. I remember the day we sat in your old office and discussed this project. The first in Georgia, cricket was never heard of. As a matter of fact, the first time an article was written in Ledger Inquirer, and I was supposed to be the contact to answer, respond to people's inquiries about cricket. People were asking me, why, why are you interested in cricket, the bugs? They thought it was literally me playing with some bugs, cockroaches, instead of the sport, which is the second most popular sport in the world after soccer. And our field is one of the best in Georgia. We have a three, tri-state leagues, so Florida, Alabama, and Georgia play, and the only field in Georgia, I think Alabama and Florida don't even have this, except for Fort Lauderdale, it's an international stadium. Played under lights, best turf, people enjoy coming here to town and playing, and the Parks and Rec Department has always been very, very supportive of our efforts. So thank you, everyone, for your continued support, and this is, this is a big honor for us. Thank you.
Y'all have, y'all done an incredible job. I mean, anybody has, if you get a chance to go out there, you'll be amazed at what they've got going on out there at that field, and the hundreds of cars lined up as people from all over the southeast are coming, and just, just thank you, because it reflects well on Columbus, that, that y'all have organized this effort and continue to kind of keep it moving strong. I think Counsel Hough wants to make a comment.
Thank you so very much. I came through there not too long ago, and I thought I was seeing things. I saw people out, working out, getting ready, and it was like a new look for Columbus. I just occasionally get in my car and ride around. I had a friend that had mentioned it to me and asked me to just stop by and take a look at things. So, don't know, if some of us played baseball, but I don't know if my hands are quick enough to catch. Some of us play baseball, but I don't know if my hands are quick enough to catch the ball without a glove like that.
You'll be surprised to know how good the mayor plays. Put him to test, and he did pretty good.
Yeah. But look forward to it. I'll be coming out to watch.
Get Councilor Davis out there.
Thank you.
Y'all have done an excellent job. Thank you so much. We appreciate y'all. And congratulations on winning the award.
Thank you.
All right. Next, we've got some more opportunities to be proud of the efforts that are being undertaken in Columbus, Georgia. I want to invite our Columbus Fire and EMS chief up, and he's going to share some information about a couple of exciting new programs. Dr. Hiltz is here, and of course, Grant from Mercy Med. Ma'am? I didn't see the Tax Commissioner. It was, yeah. I'm trying to. It wasn't on. That's all right. Yeah, it's not on my agenda. I didn't have anything on here reflecting that. Yeah. Ms. Huff, come on up to the podium. Travis, okay. Counselor Chambers.
First of all, good evening.
Good evening.
To our Tax Commissioner. Let me just say congratulations to you. I got your email today stating that December the thirty-first, you'll be leaving us, but just want to say thank you for your service, your dedication. I know you was an internal auditor for eight years and a tax commissioner for twenty-eight years. So thank you for your hard work. But I wanted to share with my colleagues that Commissioner Huff was recognized by the Georgia Association of Tax Officials. And this is the first to be done for any tax commissioner. And I think out of, in Georgia, we have approximately, what, a hundred and fifty-nine tax commissioners in Georgia? And this is the first. She was recognized. So I want to share this with the group. But it states that the Georgia Association of Tax Officials hereby recognize Lula Huff, Muskogee County Tax Commissioner, District Seventeen Leader, the Georgia Association of Tax Officials. She was part of the modernization, she was a modernization chair, a financial chair, military bases, ACHOC committee chair, a budget committee, part of the budget committee. So they honor her with a lifetime achievement award for her many years of service, dedication, and support of Georgia tax commissioners. That was May fifteen, twenty twenty-four. So that's big, and I think we need to give her her flowers today. And I just want to say thank you for all that you do, and you will be truly missed.
Thank you.
You have some comments?
I'll miss you. And I will pray for you. God bless you.
You know, it reminds me of that saying that you're gonna miss some of the clowns, but not the circus. Is that close? Listen, we appreciate everything you've done. You've been a true leader in the community, and I'm glad that they called to my attention that I had failed to turn the page and bring this up for you. But thank you for the service that you've given to the people of this county. It's been exemplary. Thank you. If you'll come on up, let me present this to you. Oh, yep.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Congratulations. But I wanted to say this, you know, while we're giving you your flowers. I'm probably one of the few people that had the opportunity to watch your whole career. I remember when you were studying for the CPA exam and trying to get that done. And I think you were with Ernst and Ernst or somebody first before you came to the city. And throughout your career and the many stops you made along the way. Enjoy working your campaign. Never knew that I would have a campaign of my own. And just think. Right. She gave me a lot of good advice when I started out, because I had, when you're young, you just got a lot of ideas, and you just get out running from pillow to post. And she just told me, you know, slow it down, and this is the way it's done. But thank you so very much, and to let the public know how fair she's been over the years. I got really smart when I was about twenty-something years old, I had my first house, and I decided when the October first payment was due, that I would just wait till December. You know, why not? I could use that money for something else. So I walked in her office for the December payment, and the lady looked at me really funny, and she said, well, let me go talk to the Tax Commissioner for a minute. She said, you are due late fees and penalties from October first to December first on the October first a part of it. I said, could you have her to come out here, please? And she came out, and she said, okay, what is it you need? I said, well, what about? And she said, no, 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 this is the way it works. So it's due October first and December first. And I had to scramble up and go broke that day, and I got out alive. But I thank you for the lessons. I thank you for everything I've learned along the way. But just thank you for being you. Congratulations.
My pleasure. If I can take this time, since you happened to bring that up. Everybody here is probably laughing, and I hope everybody here has paid their property taxes. The second payment is due December second. Okay? And Bruce, you are not by yourself. My husband, Charles, has paid the late fee for not getting his car tag on time. So it is okay. I would like to say, especially, I thought about it as I was looking at you, Gary, I think we have probably worked the longest together during my career here, and then next skipped through council, and now as mayor. It's been a pleasure, it truly has been. I would like to also say that I worked for United Technologies Pratt &amp; Whitney before coming here to the city. And what drove me really here was I traveled a lot with them as their finance director and put together an international company for them before coming here. But in the traveling, I wanted to spend more time with my daughter. And I felt I have always loved the city. And when I was at Pratt, they were very excited about coming here. But intermingling with the people, I wanted them to know what a great city we were here in Columbus, and how much we had to offer, and the kinds of employees that we had here. And so I always felt that I was a representation of this city to United Technologies, to Pratt &amp; Whitney, that we could excel and be the best company that they had ever seen throughout their organization. And I felt good about that in having worked in two of their plants, one here and the one in Southington, and we were at the top during that time. So that was very important to me. But leaving that, the next thing I did was, during that time, I did a lot of traveling. I have a daughter. I have a daughter, and she is now an orthopedic surgeon. I was away a long time from her. So coming to the city gave me an opportunity to spend more time in the city that I love, with the daughter that I love. And now I am going to get time to spend with my grandson, my first grandson, who is five months old, whose name is Iodelli, which means happiness has come to my home. And I just think it's a full circle for me to now be able to give time back to her that I wasn't able to give to her because of my career. And I get a chance to be here with my family. I get a chance to share some time with him so that he will get an opportunity to know who his grandmother is. So I thank you very, very much to the citizens of Columbus, Georgia, for giving me an opportunity to serve you once again, internal auditor for eight years, and come back and be on the other side of the fence and be with you as an elected official. I hope each and every one of you feel the love that I feel for each and every one of you, and trying to give you the best service that I could possibly give. God bless you.
Thank you, Lula. Yeah, you and I were both in our first political race the same year.
Yes, that's correct.
Ninety-six, is that right?
Yes, that's correct.
Counselor Davis wants to make some comments.
Lula, I want to say the same thing you just said to us. We love you too. And it's been a joy working with you all these years, and you've taught me a lot of things. You've always been available, and you've always been there. I want to ask you if you continue to consider maybe a consulting role possibly. I don't know. But, you know, I joke, we used to joke in baseball, only the God man, and I say that reverently, could hit a thousand. But your average, oh my gosh, if I could hit like you, geez. What was your collection rate? It was, the statistic there is, what, ninety-nine point what?
In some years, ninety-eight, ninety-seven in others.
All these years, and that's just one incredible job. And you should be proud of that. The citizens definitely, most definitely, should be proud of that. And in my mind, you'll always be a shining star. You are the epitome of what good government is all about, and I thank you for all your service. And I just hope the citizens, they know, they know you've done a fantastic job, and I'm sure all my constituents will thank you. And I will continue to have more conversations with you in thanking you and showing appreciation. Thank you.
We've got good government here. We have good government. We just have to continue to work together as a team, elected officials as well as the citizens. So I thank you.
Mayor Protell?
I was thinking about, when you sent your email out, Lula, I was thinking about how far back we go. And I remember how disappointed I was when you left the city, the city auditing position. And then when you were coming back as the run for Tax Commissioner, I was elated because this lady brought a whole new level of professionalism to everything she was involved in. And I just hope they can live up to it in the department that you're now retiring from. At the risk of starting a true confessions, Bruce, I too had to pay some penalties here and there. And even though I reached out to somebody in the tax office, everybody's treated the same. Everybody has to pay the fee, right?
Yes.
If you're late, you're late. So, but anyway, I appreciate your professionalism and just the whole friendship and the working relationship that we've had all through the years. And so you will be greatly missed.
Thank you.
Come up here, let me present to you your plaque.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Lula. All right, Chief Scarpa, appreciate you waiting. Did he leave? There he is. Sorry. Thank you for your patience.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mayor, members of council, Mr. City Manager, Mr. City Attorney. Ladies and gentlemen, it's my privilege and pleasure to be here this evening to share some exciting news from the Fire and EMS Department, and to talk a little bit about Columbus Correct Care, and more specifically, our mobile integrated healthcare program. I would ask at this time if we could get the PowerPoint up, or if I'm supposed to do that. There we go. The reason I'm here tonight is threefold. First, I was asking council to consider approving an MOU that's under the city manager's agenda for him to authorize an agreement, an MOU with Mercy Med. And I'm honored to be joined this evening, excuse me, by Dr. Grant Scarborough, the founder and CEO of Mercy Med, who's going to partner with us on this project. The second reason I'm here is to ask you for your consideration to allow the city manager to execute an MOU also with Valley Healthcare. Honored tonight to also be joined by Dr. Asante Hiltz, who is the CEO of Valley Healthcare, who is also partnering with us on this initiative. Let me figure this out. Maybe, yes. So on the left hand of the slide there, you see our mission statement as Fire and EMS Department. Most people in our community believe us to be a response agency, and we do do a tremendous amount of response. But we also do incident mitigation and education and training. And we are an all-hazard department, so our incident mitigation covers all hazards. And in this case, we're talking specifically about EMS and what we can do to address EMS challenges in our community. Excuse me. About eighty-four, eighty-two percent of our call volume, which is in excess of forty-seven thousand calls a year in fiscal year twenty-four, is EMS. In 2020, I had the privilege of taking over this position, and at that time, I spent some time looking at our organization in our community and trying to identify what our challenges were and what our solutions might be. And at that time, we launched the Center for Innovation and Leadership within our department. It's kind of an offshoot of our department to look at bringing together innovative minds in our community to address challenges in our community in a way that perhaps have not been addressed before. And that is the genesis of the birth of the Columbus Correct Care Program, which we are talking a little bit about tonight. We need innovative solutions to address community problems. Columbus Correct Care is now also a major initiative associated with the Mayor's Commission on Health, which both of these people with me tonight are working on. So what are we talking about? Talking about mobile integrated healthcare. What is mobile integrated healthcare? Well, as I mentioned, in 2000, our call volume continues to rise. In 2018, our EMS call volume in this community was around thirty thousand calls for service. Fast forward six years, we are going to eclipse thirty-seven thousand calls for service with the same resources. It is a challenge to continue to manage this increasing call volume, and that number is never going to go down. And so we need to look at innovative solutions to address the root causes of these problems. And our proposal is to roll out an integrated, a mobile integrated healthcare program that combines our Fire and EMS personnel with healthcare professionals. And while that may be new to Columbus, it's not new around the country. In fact, many progressive fire agencies around the country have been doing this program for many years. And we went to those agencies and engaged with them to figure out how we can bring those programs and those successes here to Columbus. In fact, I sent my EMS chief to Texas to spend some time with probably the most prestigious agency in the country doing what we're talking about here tonight. We engage with agencies from Denver, District of Columbus, Lexington, Kentucky, Memphis, Tennessee, and all parts in between to find out best practices and how we can bring those best practices to our community. So what is mobile integrated healthcare? Basically, it's a healthcare delivery model utilizing mobile resources, such as our paramedics and our firefighters, combined with healthcare professionals. Again, this is not something new that's been going on in the country for quite some time. Our goals are very simple. We want to enhance access to patient care. We want to improve patient outcomes. We want to reduce unnecessary trips to the emergency room, because we have a lot of people in our community that go to the emergency room that, quite honestly and quite frankly, don't need to go to the emergency room. They need to be redirected back to their primary care providers. They need help with medication regimen. They need help with social services, they need mental health support. And so we aim to provide that gap, and particularly in places in our community where we have low socioeconomic challenges, and there's areas of those in our community where that is particularly a challenge. So types of care, the other thing we're going to do that I didn't have room on the slide to put, is this is going to significantly impact the utilization of resources, emergency service resources in our community. Currently, we send a lot of resources, and we tie up a lot of resources on non-emergency activities. We need to redirect those resources to emergency activities and free up those resources. And I'm not just talking about us, I'm also talking about our police services. Chief Mathis was here earlier this evening, had to leave, but he is also a partner in this initiative with us, and I'm grateful for it. So how this works is we intend to roll out a series of mobile integrated healthcare units, or cars, if you will, SUVs. The first one is going to address our high-utilizer group. In the city of Colum- In the city of Columbus, we have approximately 413 people who have utilized our services, Fire and EMS services, over 3,219 times last year. Now, quick math will tell you that's about eight times, eight calls for service per individual over the course of 12 months. My time on earth, I've not called for EMS once. Fortunately, I've been very fortunate. But I know there are people in our community who need help. But calling our service eight times a month or eight times a year is perhaps a bit excessive. We track, we classify high utilizes as anyone who calls for our service more than five times a year. And we have people in our community who call us upwards of 50 times a year. Quite often, quite honestly, most of these calls for service are not emergent. They're not healthcare related sometimes. They just need help in different areas. But they are a significant drain on our resources and tie up a lot of resources for us. And so our goal with this first unit is a partnership with MercyMed by taking a fire medic that's going to be reassigned from our operations division, putting him in a car with a mid-level provider or perhaps a nurse practitioner for MercyMed. And they're going to go out and visit these high utilizer group and get to the root causes of their issues and try to help them navigate and reposition them back with their personal care providers. So help them navigate the challenges that they're having and hopefully only call us when they need to call us. So I'm very excited about this program. We're looking forward to launching this program in the first quarter of 2025 next year. And I'm very grateful to Dr. Scarborough and his team for joining us in this initiative. The second piece of this puzzle is to address the mental health issue in our community. As you all know, mental health is a challenge not just here in Columbus or in Muskogee County, but around the country and certainly perhaps around the world. We have significant resources tied up dealing with mental health challenges in our community. We respond to literally hundreds and hundreds of calls from all, from all, the entire scope and spectrum. Everything from people stripping off their clothes and standing in the middle of the street and yelling at cars going by, to people with suicide ideations and who have needs for medication adjustments. Again, these tie up a lot of our resources. They tie up police department resources. And our goal is to address this by sending, instead of sending those resources to those calls, which oftentimes result in an emergency room visit where perhaps an emergency room is not the best place for that individual, or a visit to the jail, which again, perhaps is not always the best case for that individual. But by providing a mental health clinician with one of our Fire EMS personnel, and the mental health clinician be provided by Dr. Hiltz and the folks at Valley Healthcare. And these folks will go out and address those calls for service. Again, these are hundreds of calls for service tying up a tremendous amount of resources. And I'm very grateful to Dr. Hiltz for agreeing to partner with us on this initiative. The third challenge our organization faces and our community faces is challenges associated with social services. We have a reputation in our organization for getting things done. And oftentimes, that means people call us for things that aren't really in our mission statement and aren't really in our wheelhouse. But they call us because they think we can get things done. Or perhaps they don't want to call the police department or some other agency in the city, or they don't know who to call. And so they call 911 and they request the fire department. In 2000, excuse me, fiscal year '24, we had over 1,100 calls for service of this type. And it's probably more than that, but that's kind of the primaries. Primary challenge is these folks that need help that don't know where to get it. Where they don't know how to navigate the systems that are out there to help them get it. So our intent is to identify someone within our organization, a fire medic, to partner with another agency that provides a social service worker to go out and address those calls and get those people the help that they need, help them navigate those challenges so they stop calling emergency services and tying up everything from dispatch to police and Fire and EMS. And finally, the fourth unit that we hope to mobilize in the future, and I'm grateful for council's direction, Councilwoman Torey Tucker, for considering this and suggesting this, that we consider this, is to address our military presence in our community. We have probably in excess of 9,000 veterans in our community. And they have a tremendous presence in our city as we know. But they also utilize our resources. And oftentimes, they are puzzled or challenged to navigate the resources that are afforded to them post their military career through the Veterans Association. So our goal is to put one of our fire personnel in a car with one of our military liaisons and go, help these heroes navigate those challenges. And again, help them find a better place to call than to call 911. So what do you need to make this happen? Well, quite frankly, we need only three things. Vehicles, equipment, and personnel. Fortunately for us, the first two vehicles, these first two programs that we're going to roll out, we have the vehicles ready. The first one was acquired through, the first vehicle and all of its equipment was acquired through a congressionally directed spending grant that we received from Senator Ossoff's office to the tune of $139,000 that allowed us to buy that vehicle and all the equipment that goes with it. We are going to direct, repurpose, I shouldn't say repurpose, temporarily assign one of our fire medics to that unit. And again, Dr. Scarborough has offered to provide a mid-level provider to work with us and address that, and work with us in that unit. So the second, the third piece of that, of course, is the personnel. The second car that we have is the mobile integrated healthcare car. That car, council approved reappropriation of some ARP funds earlier this year that allowed us to buy that vehicle and all the equipment that goes in that vehicle. And all those, both of those vehicles and all that equipment is already on order. Some of it's already here. And so I thank council for allowing us to do those things. We have directed, we are going to identify fire personnel in the first part of next year to serve on that unit. And Dr. Hiltz is going to identify somebody from her organization to serve on that unit. So I'm very grateful for that. The other two units, we are kind of in the planning phase and kind of see where these goes. But we're looking forward to getting these first two units off the ground. But the honest sense of this, all this, of course, costs money. And the sustainment piece is the third reason why I'm here. Is to ask you, as council, over time, over the next 12 months or so, consider what sustainment of this program looks like if you want this program to continue. We currently plan to launch these first two vehicles next year on one shift only, from 8:00 to 5:00, probably 8:00 to 5:00 Monday through Friday, with the resources that we have. As you can see there, we intend that the first two vehicles over the course of time become 24-hour response units. None of these crises stop at 5:00, unfortunately. So we would like to be able to staff those units 24 hours, those first two units 24 hours a day. The third and fourth unit, the social service unit, military support unit, most of the resources that those entities are going to connect with close their business doors at 5:00. So it does not make sense to staff those units 24 hours a day. Up on the screen there and in your handout have provided a great amount of detail, I hope, so you can see the cost for maintaining this program, sustaining this program into the future. So that is my third ask, is over the course of the next 12 months, that council considers if this program is worthwhile, that we identify a sustainable funding source that will allow us to maintain not only the equipment, but the personnel. Because I certainly don't expect Dr. Hiltz and Dr. Scarborough to maintain offering their services for free indefinitely. So in conclusion, this program is designed to enhance healthcare services for our community. We have collaborated with a number of entities, not just those that are represented here tonight, but a number of entities across our county to help us build the network of resources that we're going to need to make this successful. I'm very proud of that. I'm very grateful for my team back there. Chief Hazen, who actually dreamed up this program, is sitting back there, who's our EMS chief. I'm very excited that we can bring this here to you tonight and provide support, particularly for those who are underserved in our community. And at this time, before I conclude, I'd like to ask Dr. Hiltz and Dr. Scarborough if they'd like to add anything.
Good evening, everyone. I want to just thank you for allowing us to speak tonight and to share that during the COVID-19 pandemic, we as organizations who work very closely together recognize that it was our opportunity to remove the silos and truly work together. And I think you all would agree to that. And then we made a commitment not to let the pandemic go to waste, to continue that collaboration, to be innovative and to think outside the box. Because if we do business in healthcare the same way we've always done it, we can't expect to see different results. So this is an example of that innovation. It's a great collaboration and great partnership. And we want to make Columbus amazing. And I think this is an approach that we can accomplish that with. So I'm excited about that. Valley Healthcare is committed to community. I am a firm believer in mobile health services, as you all know. I received a CDBG grant for Public Health on Wheels when I was with the Health Department. And now, our Wellness on Wheels program with Valley Healthcare understands that you have to go out of the building to do healthcare in your community to reach the underserved. And this mobile project will allow us to do that. So we are excited about the partnership and hope that you all will support it.
Thank you, Dr. Hiltz. I was going to say some wise words, but I think she summed it up pretty good. Columbus is amazing. And to be able to have the opportunity to have this two-pronged approach, to be able to work with Asante and work with the fire department, is a real treat for MercyMed. And the thought of being able to go out into the community and meeting folks where they are. You know, we talk a lot in this now about social determinants of health. If your society is not healthy, the individuals in that society will not be healthy. And the chance to go to them and care for them is a wonderful opportunity for us. With us, like Dr. Hiltz, who have a desire to kind of care for the least of these in this community. So thank you all for letting us be here.
Thank you, Graham. I neglected to mention that, you know, our second vehicle, we intend to have, along with the mental health clinician, Chief Mathis has agreed to provide a police officer, a community police officer, to ride with us. As some of you perhaps know, some of our mental health clients can be dangerous at times. Today, the way it works is our resources from the fire department go sit on the side of the road and wait for a police officer to become available before we engage our mental health clients in the city. This will alleviate that challenge and put all three of us in the same car at the same time to go and address those personnel. So I'm grateful to Chief Mathis, who couldn't be here tonight. So again, my ask is that you would consider allowing the city manager to execute those two MOUs and long-term consider some sustainability funding for this project. And I'm glad to answer any questions.
Yeah, Councilor Tucker.
Yes, first of all, I want to thank you for allowing myself, Councilor Kogle and Councilor Davis to kind of be a part of the brainstorming of getting this project actually up and running. And then thank you for allowing me to bring that veteran piece because it is needed. From when, I know from when I worked with homeless veterans and how many homeless veterans, you know, we have in the community. So, and how many times they call. So it's definitely needed. And you said, who better to be able to do this than you? And I have to commend you because that's a true statement. I'll never forget when I had to make that phone call to you back in May of last year when I suspected that my uncle had passed away. And it was you that sent a team out there to go in that window and get in there and actually verified that my uncle had passed away. So first of all, I just want to tell you and the team, thank you for that. I will never forget you for that moment. And I know for a fact that this program is needed. And what I will say is, yes, we're going to support it. I was actually going to ask the city manager if we can bring it up now. That way we can approve it. But two, I know you've probably been, somebody has spoken to you about using part of, I think we're calling it Community Healthcare, AKA Ingerent Care Fund, for this actual, you know, effort to offset the price. I think that that's a continuous amount of money, an actual dedicated fund that we can use to be able to, you know, offset some of those costs using that Ingerent Care Fund. But I do want to say thank you, Dr. Hiltz and Dr. Scarborough. I've actually had to get with Dr. Scarborough to get my COVID, my COVID test several times at the beginning of the COVID pandemic. I appreciate you for just allowing me to send you an email and you got me right on in and out. But I thank you all for being a part of this, really like a community healthcare coalition. One thing that I will say that COVID taught me is that we really are stronger and better together. And we saw that actually happen. Everybody coming together to actually help citizens. And that's exactly what Chief is doing right now, bringing all the pieces together to be a solution to a problem that he saw when he first got here in 2020. So thank you. And on that note, city attorney, can we bring those two MO? Oh, just.
Items one and two.
Okay. I would like to call up items one and two, memorandum of agreement on the city manager's agenda.
Is that a motion?
Yes, it's a motion.
All right, motion, second to approve items one and two on the city manager's agenda. All in, all in. Do the motion, who's next? Okay.
Thanks, mayor. Chief Scarpa, Dr. Hiltz, Dr. Scarborough. I love this program, I really do. And I think it's going to be a valuable asset for our community and taking the need to those who need that help. It's going to relieve that burden off the hospitals, and we know about that. This body, as the Community Healthcare Fund Committee, which Torey, Councilor Tucker, Councilor Kogle, Councilor Hickey's on that. We've been talking about this. You and I have been talking about it. Councilor Tucker and I have been talking about this for a long time, many, many years. And I'm just glad to see you taking the vision and running with it. I'm in full support. And I'm in full support of making this happen not only today and tomorrow, but from here on out. And I think this body would be in full agreement that the Community Healthcare Fund would be the vehicle to make that happen and continue. And I believe in it that much, and I'm in full support of that. We did talk to, we've had talks. I know you guys have been talking and coming up with the concept. We've talked to our consultants about potentially using some of those funds. They didn't know at the time. It was more pertaining to healthcare, mental healthcare. But this is exactly that. And it's kind of come after we started the, looking into a reimbursement model to help our healthcare providers to provide those services. But now, being able to take that service to them and the collaborative effort, I mean, it's perfect. So I just want you to note that I think this council would be in full support of that come time to make those decisions.
Thank you.
All right, so we'll call the question. There's a motion, second to approve items one and two. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, they're approved. Councilor Kogle?
Chief, this is excellent collaboration across all the departments, with the police department, with our local health initiatives within Columbus. It's going to be a significant impact. It'll free up a lot of, like you said, a lot of resources for true 911 emergencies and hopefully move those assets around. So I've always been a big advocate that a healthy city is a happy city. And this is definitely advancing happy, advancing happy. So thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Mr. City Manager, do you have?
No, I was just going to speak to one and two. But Councilor Tucker already called for it.
All right, Councilor Thomas?
I was going to do this.
That's okay. Chief, just continue to be impressed by you and your leadership and all the folks that you have working with you. I know when COVID hit was when the commission, the Mayor's Health Commission began. And the whole idea was try to increase access. And to do that through mobile units. And it sort of expanded into the, into the mobile food mills vehicle that they take the mobile farmer's market out there. Our Parks and Rec, it was trying to take some activities out in some of these areas. And what you're doing with this project, And 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 what you're doing and with with this project, I remember you, y'all, y'all have, they have, folks don't understand, they have retreats annually, and they get away from everybody, and they sit there and they talk about moonshots. They talk about wild, crazy goals and ideas. And I remember y'all talking about this, Chief Hazen mentioning this, back right, I think, first year you were here. And to see it begin to come to fruition, I think is a powerful thing. This has been done. I know Betty Casey, Mayor Betty Casey in Carrollton, has had a police officer, a paramedic riding through their community, and everybody just really talks up the benefits. There's no, there's no loss. I mean, it saves, I hate to be so mercenary, but it saves us money, because we can be a little bit cleaner with the calls that we respond to. It should save the hospitals money, because they're not gonna have a lot of the clutter in their in their emergency rooms, and they'll be able to get get them some information and some healthcare direct. So, of course, the idea is this will be a standalone deal, no more, you know, health commission. It'll just be an organization working for and being run by the community. So, Dr. Scarborough, Dr. Hiltz, appreciate y'all on what you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. And it only took four hours, but we're through with the mayor's agenda. City Attorney, I'll hit you.
Thank you, Mayor. We will not take four hours, but we've got a short business agenda here. First item up is the Primrose Road rezoning, ready for adoption.
There's a motion second to approve the rezoning on Primrose Road. Any comments to the item? All right, if you'll put it on the screen, councillors, please vote. Okay. Do we need to vote? Huh? Affirmative. Do we need, Councillor Hickie, nevermind?
All right, that's affirmative, Councillor Hickie.
We got it.
Okay, the next item is Beunivista Road.
Oh, yeah, just a moment, I'm sorry. Councillor Hickie?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. I just wanted to say, first of all, thank you to all the council people, all my colleagues around the table, for your support on this item. And speaking to Mr. Wright, this was a project that's been ongoing for almost a year for him. It appeared that at every turn of the corner, there was some things that came up that he had to fix or correct in order to get to where we are. And I just want to say to each of my colleagues and everyone at the table here that I love each and every one of you, I respect you, and we can always agree to disagree. And I just want to say thank you again for helping getting this done for this young man. Mr. Mr. Wright has been in the business now, been a developer since 2017. And he has a public-private partnership down in Albany, Georgia, where Albany, the seat of Albany have agreed to give him $4.1 million to help build affordable housing there. And I know that in the last council meeting, that there was some concern about the 50-foot buffer that was brought up. And but we got that passed, and of course, I didn't vote for that, because I didn't think that we needed to do a 50-foot buffer. But he agreed to it, and he said that he'll be able to work with that. But what I just want to say to my colleagues is this, you know, we talk about around the table all the time about being fair and just. And I think the optics in that, we need to just keep in mind that, you know, people are watching. I got a lot of phone calls, a lot of my constituents and a lot of people in the community just felt like, you know, that that wasn't, you know, it wasn't right, but he agreed to it, and he said that he'd be able to work with it. But I just want to, you know, you know, just let's just make sure that that across the board, we're 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 being just and fair with everybody. And I know that I asked Mr. Johnson to bring me a list of 50-foot buffers, and he submitted a list to me. But what I didn't clear clearly say in the last council meeting is that I wanted that 50-foot buffer for townhouses. The list that he gave me didn't have a list of townhouses on it. It had some duplexes on it in another neighborhood that was far farther out on Veterans Parkway. It was, how many duplexes was it? I mean, I I guess that Promenade, I think it is, but I, yeah, it was, yeah, just just a neighborhood of of those duplexes. But I just want, you know, want us to just always just pay attention to the optics, you know, because it 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 appeared that, you know, asking for that 50-foot buffer for him was like another roadblock. But I know that's probably wasn't, I mean, Councilman Allen stated why he was doing it, and we understand. And but I just want, you know, just, you know, if we're gonna be, you know, fair and across the board, we need to be that way with everybody. So that's all I'm saying. But thank y'all for supporting it. He's he can move on now and get this done. And and so, you know, I just want to say thank you. I appreciate it.
We got a vote on that, so it was approved. Item two is the Beunivista Road zoning.
Motion second to approve Beunivista Road's rezoning. Any comments to the to the motion? Hearing none, please put it on the screen, and we'll allow council to vote on it. Oh, we've lost it. All those, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? There we go. Obviously, none are opposed. It passes.
All right. That's approved. Next item is the zoning of 41121st Street, ready for adoption.
Motion second to approve item three, any discussion? All right, let's put that on the screen. Councillors, please cast your votes. All right, that's approved.
All right, our last zoning item is the text amendment for.
Motion second to approve item four, any discussion on that item? Hearing none, put it on the screen, councillors, please register your votes. All right, and that's approved.
Okay, and that's all we've got on our business agenda, Mayor. We've already covered executive session, so that's it.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to the public agenda. For those of you that are unfamiliar with it, you'll be able to speak for five minutes. Five minutes is pretty rigid, but if you aren't able to complete your thoughts, we'll allow you to come back at the end of the clerk's agenda for an additional three minutes. Two, okay. Councillor Tucker?
How you doing, Director Johnson?
Fine, thank you.
I just wanted to clarify, because I think I have given some erroneous information. When an individual has a project, say, for instance, the one like you're on right there, what's what's the step? Do they come to you first, or do they go to PAC? Like, how, what's that process?
If if they need to rezone, they will come to us. We'll usually have a pre a pre-application meeting, make sure they've got everything. Once they get everything, then they go to the planning commission. And then after that, they come here for first reading.
So if it needs to be rezoned, they come
To us.
To you, and then go to PAC. Now, is it approved at PAC first, and then approved by you, in reference to the?
Yes, PAC makes an independent recommendation, and then we make an independent recommendation.
After PAC.
So you have two independent recommendations.
Okay, and that's with the, so the first process for rezoning is to come to you to get all the paperwork, and then it goes to PAC, and then it comes once PAC recommends or don't, not, you know, approve, then it goes to you to for the final.
Right.
Okay, that's all. Just wanted to make sure I clarified. Thank you, sir.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. All right, and all you have to do is give your name and your state of residence. You don't have to give your, don't have to give your your street address. Ms. Teresa Alameen is listed first, but I don't see her here. All right, the Reverend Johnny Flakes, he is not here either. Okay, Ms. Nicole, Natalie Nicole is going. Sure.
I know Ms. Ms. Nicole was gonna come up and speak a little bit about the crosswalk and road paint safety concerns. And I just wanted to let her know, because I know that she'll be watching. That Director Beck reached out in regards to the concerns at the 13th and 24th intersection for the sidewalks on the street and the crosswalk there, as well as the intersection at Talboton Road, 28th Street, and 14th Avenue. We've been working with her pretty closely on getting those restriped, and he has submitted that to the contractor. So good news for that project.
All right, thank you. All right, Mr. Todd Gibson regarding pet permit fees, is Mr. Gibson here? No? I can't think of that. Ms. Jennifer Parker regarding CACC negotiations? She's ill? Oh, I'm sorry, okay. All right, Ms. Sandy Gunnels regarding lack of, she's here, regarding lack of transparency.
And I apologize for stumbling, but I have been down in South Georgia pulling pine trees out from the hurricane. If you've not seen the devastation in South and Middle Georgia, it is something incredible. I'm here to talk about lack of transparency, and I'm probably gonna cut it short, because we're all tired. But basically, today popped up on my internet some more about the scandal with the Finance Department, et cetera, et cetera, today. And it seems like it's scandal after scandal with CCG. The Finance Department investigation with, we don't know how much money, as Council Data said today, is missing. There's questionable that there's been some criminal activity that has now been sent to a district attorney in Middle Georgia, so that there's no evidence of any collusion or anything like that. We still got the scandal going with Columbus Animal Control. We've not heard anything recently about that. I don't know when it's going to be back on the agenda again. But the city manager facilitated or said that he was gonna continue to communicate, and I don't know if anybody's heard anything else about it. But there's been no direct communication to the public. City leadership has the obligation to keep the public informed as to the status of CAC. Unfortunately, that hasn't been done. Mayor Henderson stated that building public trust was his goal, but his actions show this not to be true at this point. And it's been almost 120 days since the council meeting where Chai's case was discussed. And I think we've had two meetings of negotiation boards with pause that I've heard from people that are on there. Columbus Animal Allies has specifically asked for updates to avoid the grow with growth of further distrust, but not received any through the city channels. And we would like to know what's going on with that, where we are, what has happened. Councillor Thomas, in our last meeting, had to remind the city manager that he needed to be at least keeping the council up to date with what was going on with that, so apparently that wasn't occurring either. How is the council okay with Dale Short having direct oversight of Columbus Animal Control right now? Seeing as how she has been in charge of Columbus Animal Control during all of these scandals for the last 13 to 15 years, all the way from poison meatballs being put out, with total disregard for the safety of humans and other animals, to what has happened and what was discussed from July 23rd till now. So that is something that needs to be discussed, why she is still in charge of that. I can only go in listening to some of the things that were said today, is I have been an administrator. I've been a vice president of nursing at Tulane Hospital, et cetera. I cannot believe that someone who is in a rollover department doesn't realize what their turnover rate is, doesn't know why that's happening, doesn't know that their employees aren't doing their jobs to $42 to $45 million missing, et cetera. So the public is getting a little fed up. You wouldn't know it, because we've all gone home, because it's so late and we're tired. But more and more, it's popping up on social media, et cetera, what's going on in Columbus, what's going on in these departments, what's going on with CAC. And you saw the outpouring in July and August with CAC. We can get folks revved up again to come and find out what's going on. But we'd really appreciate it if people would communicate, especially the city manager in his office. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next is Ms. Kathy Tanner. Play yard at CACC and other issues.
Sorry, I don't have a lot of money for a color printer, so I'm trying to give the color to you guys. And I'll take the black and white. My name is Kathy Cant Tanner. I've lived in Columbus, Georgia all my life, and I'm here to discuss Columbus Animal Care and Control. First thing I'd like to say, which is a little bit of an opposing view, is to thank the members of the city council that took the initiative to believe in what the animal advocates in the community have been saying to you for so very, very long, and taking the irrefutable video and audio evidence and enlisting the Columbus Police Department to investigate the atrocities that were being committed by those at CAC, going on completely unchecked by their superiors. Completely unchecked, no checking, no check, no balance, nothing, zero zilch. Just in case I didn't make that clear, nothing. And animals were being murdered. But what I will tell you is that for me, there's validation from the city council members that supported this and helped us to get this to happen, and that I'm hoping that means that we will no longer have to beg you to believe us when we tell you something, because we're not lying. We have no reason to lie. We only have the reason to save and help. That is the only thing we want to do. Recently, the play yard that I've spoken to you about multiple times is now being used, and that's your first picture. And you see dogs running around and happy. And I'm scared to make that statement, because it's been stated that it's not available because of Parvo, because Parvo lasts so long, and it has to be tested, and it has to be treated. And I gave multiple suggestions, people from DeKalb County that would come down and do it. And I don't know why it's open, but I want it to stay open. And I don't want there to be repercussions, because I'm happy, and all the volunteers are elated that it's open. But we do need to know why it's open, and who made that decision, and what process that was, because I was told there was no process, couldn't happen, even though I offered from multiple counties how they were able to keep their areas clean. You also have pictures, I've lost my place here, that we have volunteers that have donated, we have community members that have donated Kong toys, that we've also donated peanut butter, we donate. My CPA is gonna go to me, Kathy, I can't take this. When I give him my records from PayPal, from Cash App, from Venmo, from my credit card, not credit card, not, all the money that I've donated this year just to do anything for these dogs, because there's no money. There's don't, there are no finances for anything, that can afford anything. You have pictures of these Kong toys, pictures of these beds. These dogs lay on concrete. These are beds. My dogs lay on beds. My dogs are dogs, just like those dogs are. And a little bed like this would be something nice to curl up on, and maybe they could feel a little normal. be something nice to curl up on, and maybe they could feel a little normal. And then maybe, on the weekends, when I do all these reels with these dogs, and people share 5,000 of them, and they're viewed 5,000 times, I could help get more dogs adopted. That's my, that's my goal. That we have, the dogs are now being spayed and neutered. Thank you, Councilman Garrett. Guessing that money is your part of what you added, because it's being done, and I'm told that within 10 to 15 days, they'll all be done. Sorry, my time's up. I got 26 seconds left. You can read the rest, you can see the pictures. I've been here, I'll be here again. I'm not going anywhere till we get this fixed, and we take care of the dogs. Because if you have a dog, or a cat, or any animal that you love, they're part of your family, and if they're not, then like I say on Facebook, get a stuffed animal. They're free.
Thank you, Ms. Tanner.
They don't cost any money. Thank you.
All right, next is Ms. Lynn Ezell, Searswood Neighborhood, to express opposition. Ms. Ezell, how are you?
Good evening. I noticed on my notes that I wrote, it said good afternoon, so I changed that to good evening. Members of the city council, Mayor Henderson, city manager, city attorney, others, thank you so much for just allowing me just a few minutes of your time this evening. My name is Lynn Ezell. I live at 4526 Searfrode in Searswood subdivision, and I've lived there for, ever since we moved to Columbus 30 years ago. What I'm, what I'm talking about now is not on your agenda tonight, and you're all aware of that, but it will be presented to the Planning Advisory Commission tomorrow morning. And we understand, because we've been there once before, that that's the first step that we take in something that may be a lengthy process. So you may want to watch the PAC meeting tomorrow morning. But at issue is the rezoning request submitted by Wiser Home Builders LLC to rezone the property at 5201 Macon Road from SFR 2 to SFR 3 with conditions plus RMF 1. And I know that all of you have been receiving emails. I know some of you have said you've received my email. You've been receiving calls, you've been receiving text messages regarding this issue. So there's a possibility that you may be discussing this in December, or maybe just after the first of the year. But there are many issues that we have concerns about with this project. One of those issues is an in-depth flood study that has been done, that you will hear more about, much more about, at a later date. But at this time, we have 800, I'm gonna say that one more time, 800 taxpaying citizens from nine different neighborhoods that have signed petitions and have joined together to respectfully ask that if this request from Wiser comes before you all, that you will not approve the rezoning request. All of the many, many neighbors that I have spoken to during this process, they are all in favor of development on that property. We are just opposed to the rezoning of that property. Thank you very much for your time this evening. Thank you for all that you do for the city of Columbus.
Thank you, Ms. Ezell. Counselor Hickey?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Ms. Ezell, Ms. Ezell, I just want to tell you that I support the effort of all the residents out there and in the adjoining neighborhoods. I agree to keep it zoned as it is, and I hope that I will have the support of my colleagues to keep it that way. So thank you for coming here tonight and making your presentation to us. Yes, ma'am.
All even for District 1. Thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am. You're welcome.
All right. Ms. City Manager, your agenda. I think we've already handled the first two.
Mayor, I've got some purchases.
All right, there's three motions for approval for A through J, and I assume one was a second. Is there any of these purchases someone would like pulled for discussion? A hearing, none. If you'd put it on the screen, counsel, please remember, you'll vote one time, but that means all of those items are accepted. City Manager, go ahead and walk through those, please.
Mayor, first, I've got additional sources for pursuit vehicle buildout. It's actually two additional sources so that we can expedite getting buildouts for those public safety vehicles. B, I've got change order for, and this is for Summon Road Rec Center, and it is for the roofs that they're gonna be putting on the Rec Center, Pittman Wall are roofing. I've got the same thing for C, and that's Shirley Winston Rec Center. I've got the same for D, and that's Frank Chester Rec Center. So we're getting new roofs to put on each of those rec centers, and they are way past due. I've got Panasonic tough books with accessories for the police department. I've got console computer with accessories from E, for E-911. I've got cardiac monitor defibrillator with accessories for fire EMS. I've got power load system and Power Pro 2 ambulance cot with accessories for fire EMS. I've got Amendment 19 for construction manager as general contractor services for Columbus Government Center. This will allow us to move forward with that project. And I've got on-call general contractor services for general contracting services on an as-needed basis. When things come up that we need a general contractor, we don't have to delay and go through an RFP on something that we need to do an emergency purchase on. We can just go ahead and solicit from one of the various contractors and move the project forward. Those are the purchases, Mayor and counsel. I do have a couple of updates. One is the Liberty District, Liberty District, not Liberty Theater, but Liberty District. And then the other is a brief update on GDOT funding by Director Will Johnson. So I'm gonna call on Deputy City Manager Pam Hodge, who's working on the Liberty District Master Plan with Neil Clark with Heck Bertishaw Architects.
Now, Deputy City Manager Hodge, at the risk of sounding ugly here, it's 52 slides. I hope we're gonna go through them relatively quickly.
So we, we do have a shorter version that Mr. Clark will go through, but we have contracted with Heck Bertishaw and Neil Clark to look at the Liberty District and put together ideas he's been meeting with community stakeholders that he'll talk about and come up with a plan that we can present to the public for input, but we wanted to present to council for you to kind of see what we've been working on. So at this time, I'll turn it over to Neil Clark.
One quick second.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, really quickly, I did just want to state for the record that Counselor Garrett's vote did not show on the overhead, and he was voting in favor of the purchases items, A through J.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And so, Mr. Clark, you know the hour is late, and we've been here since 4:30, so we do want to move this forward, need to expedite.
Thank you, Isaiah. Yeah, at this time, I'll say that we'll get this done in about 10 minutes.
Okay, that's good. Just work on, go ahead and get started.
Everybody has in front of you our.
Before you get started, I want to ask, I have been told for years that there was a Liberty District plan done maybe a decade or more ago. Is this the same, or is this different?
It is the same area.
But so, so the plan that was done a decade ago is null and void?
Well.
There's been about three iterations.
Yeah, I was gonna say, that plan was like 2003, like 21 years ago, and so obviously, that plan would not be, it would need some work to get us to 20 years later.
I wanted to make that clarification, because I had heard that there was a plan that had already been done.
That's over 20 years ago.
Okay, thank you.
You know, in walking through the Liberty District area, it's easy to see the signs of a neighborhood in decline. It's there in some of the buildings our master plan points out, buildings that are either vacant or underutilized. The zoning down there is a mishmash of different zones. You know, we're recommending that we clean that up with an expansion of the uptown zoning, because it favors the kind of development that is happening today, where we are trying to create a place for people to be attracted to, much, much like uptown is a place. We see that possibility for the Liberty District as well. The master plan looks at the benefits that are down there today that we have to work, work with. We have the Liberty Theater, Historic Theater. We have lots of historic buildings in that area that are still there. A lot of the churches date back to the very founding of our city. So anybody that loves history loves the Liberty District. Yeah, that's right. And so what our master plan is trying to do is to, a couple of things. One is to give, give you a kind of point and time feel for what exists down in the Liberty District today. And then, secondly, how can we take that and leverage it for future development to happen in that area, and what, what could that look like? And that's basically what you have in the document in front of you. And so I would ask you to, to go through, look at it. If you have any questions about it, that'd certainly be a big welcome, a phone call, or a meeting to go over it with you. We can keep it as short as that.
Well, and I think we should keep it as short as that, and let them go through it. And let me tell you, you've met with a lot of people.
Yes.
One-on-one, small groups, large groups. You've had them to go back and recall what they remember about the Liberty District, and what appeal, I mean, he has gone and he's done the footwork to talk to people and still talking to people. And when you go through it, you got questions, you know, he'll talk to you on the phone, he'll come visit with you. You've done that with a lot of people.
Yes.
And, and so he's willing to do that. And so I would just ask that you take it in, and take a close look at it, and, and then let Neil know, let us know if you've got questions, and maybe at a different time, he can come back and go through it in detail.
Sure.
Neil, I'm just glad y'all are getting some traction, and, and thank you for your patience, too, for sitting out here waiting to present this.
You know, and I know you interviewed, I mean, you interviewed everybody. I, you know, you interviewed me.
Luba, Luba was one of the first.
Lula Huff, and just everybody, one-on-one, and, you know, we've talked about the Tallahoe Grill, and, and all the stuff that was down there in the Liberty District that many people have forgotten and don't know about. But I talked about the gas station at 9th and 6th. I bought gas, I mean, I shared all my stories with him. I know, Counselor Huff, you'll remember the gas station at 9th and 6th. Yeah, yeah, Counselor Hickey, you remember that, too. Yeah, you know, yeah, so, but anyway, Mayor, if there are questions.
We do, we've got Counselor Hickey.
I just want to, thank you, Ms. Mayor. Mr. Clark, and I know the city manager said that you spoke with a lot of the stakeholders. So those same stakeholders of old, from the old plan, are the same people that you've already been in contact with, and that have reached out to you, and you reached back out to them.
Yes.
Those are some of the same people. Okay, all right. Thank you very much. That's what I want to know. Thank you.
Mayor, if there are no other questions, we'll just leave it at that, and maybe we can bring him back at a different time.
There are none.
Okay.
Neil, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Sorry you had to wait so long.
No, it's quite all right.
All right. And so, Mayor, I'm gonna call up Will Johnson. A few months back, our Choice of the OT board member, Kathy Williams, arranged a meeting with GDOT Commissioner brought him to Columbus, and we sat and talked about some monies that is available to us, and as much as $50 million. And so I asked staff to work on that, and Will Johnson is here tonight and gonna report on that money.
Need PowerPoint.
We're waiting on CCG TV to load it.
There we go.
Tap this thing down. I haven't done anything on this yet. Danielle.
Need some help. Danielle.
This? Okay, there we go. All right. Real quick, I'm gonna go over the GDOT funding process, how we get federal money. We identify the project and add it to the Metropolitan Transportation Plan, which is our long-range transportation plan. Those are projects that could be 15, 20 years out. Once a local match for funding has been identified, which is almost always 20%, it moves to GDOT Planning for programming with dollar amounts in the year for each project phase. Those phases are preliminary engineering, right-of-way utilities, and construction. GDOT Planning sends the project to its Office of Financial Management for Programming and to the Federal Highway Administration to approve the project. Once OFM assigns a project number to project manager, the project manager develops the project framework agreement and sends a document to us for approval and signatures. It comes to you all. It's advertised for 30 days. After 30 days, the project is moved from the Metropolitan Transportation Plan, the long-range plan, to the Transportation Improvement Program, which is the short-term plan. Once it gets in there, it means it's time to go. The NPO places the PFA on the council agenda for approval. Once approved, the city manager signs and sends the PFA to GDOT for signatures. GDOT then forwards the PFA with a notice to proceed to advertise the project for design. We put out an RFP, 30 days. We choose our consultants. FHWA will receive and approve all necessary documents. The right-of-way phase will start once FHWA signs off on the environmental documents, which comes with the, the preliminary engineering. GDOT eventually certifies the right-of-way. Once complete, CCG will advertise an RFP for the construction phase. Consultants are chosen, approved by council. The NTP, notice of proceed is issued, and the construction begins. That includes the utility relocation, which is very costly. Ideally, this whole process takes five to seven years. In reality, it's seven plus. Lot of red tape. The issue that city manager mentioned, there's 53, over $53 million in Y230 federal funds that were unused since 2012, I believe. 4.7 in transportation alternative funds, 1.6 in carbon reduction funds. The reasons for these funds not being utilized is we have the advantage of having adopted two T-Splosts. So the two T-Splosts, instead of us sending those MTP projects from old plans through the federal process, we just moved them over to the T-Splosts and paid for them without having to go through the bureaucracy of the federal money. So we didn't use this money. Give you a history of how, of the money. Utilization of the federal funds stalled with the passing of the T-Splosts in 2012. We moved major projects out of the MTP and moved them into the T-Splosts. Those projects were not subject to extensive federal fund requirements. In October of 2022, right when I came back, we were notified by GDOT and existing NPO staff that those funds had lapsed. We were not gonna get them. Then in March 2024, I was notified by the GDOT Assistant Planning Director that the federal funds had, in fact, not last, lapsed. We received suggestions from GDOT Planning on options to utilize funds by providing matching funds to GDOT for local projects to better our community. To date, we've To date, we've given GDOT about 18, $8 million in Y-230 funds as match money. The Macon Road, Highway 80 Roundabout is one, a couple of bridges on Fort Benin, the Roundabout in Highway 27 and 520 in Casita. So we've given them that match money. So it shows the federal government that we are working to utilize that money and spend it. Then May of seven, May 17th of this year, the Commissioner came down with all of his department heads, met with Board Member Kathy Williams, our, the CCG executive staff, the Mayor, City Manager, to discuss the unused funds and how fast we could get that going. At the same time, we're updating our Metropolitan Transportation Plan, which is our long-term plan. We kicked that off in January, it has to be complete by December 16th. Our consultants, partners and associates have identified projects for those lapsed funds. The TA funds, the 4.7, we took that and applied it to the fall line trace extension, which will go, come off of Solomon, Goopoma Springs, and it hit Gray Rock until it hits our MPO boundary in Harris County. We can't go any further than that, they would have to pick it up. Once, we can lose this money in September of '25 if GDOT does not authorize it by then. It's programmed, not authorized. So we're really pushing hard on that. The carbon reduction funds, that's about 1.6 million. Our consultants have come up with some studies and possible short-term sidewalk improvements that's sort of low-hanging fruit, so we can get that money used by September of 2025. As for the Y-230 funds, some of the proposed projects in the new MTP that is in the comment phase right now, it's on our website, it's on the city's website. Please go on there and look at it and comment. Some J.R. Allen improvements that were in the study done in 2020 to bring it up to interstate standards have been identified. River road widening, this says to, from the Roundabout to Willet Drive, but it's the Roundabout to Mountain Brook. Warm Springs Road connector improvements at Milgen Road, specifically right there at Cooper Creek. And another example is Veterans Parkway Airport, 308 54th Street intersection improvements, make it safer. So those, those are just a few. We've got several in the, in the MTP. Our next steps is to adopt the MTP. There will be a public meeting on December 10th at the library from 5 to 7. Again, we have to have this adopted by December 16th, under FHWA guidelines. We will follow the GDOT Funding Program to pull identified projects into the tip so they can get authorized for that remaining $45 million. And those projects will be programmed utilizing the unused Y-230 funds dating back to 2012. And I'll take any questions.
Council Crabbe.
Thank you. I don't know if this project could be possibly added to it, but while I've, while we've been discussing things with Sears Woods in this redevelopment on Macon Road, they talked about a study that was done about the water issues in that area. And it said that it would be like $2 million to fix all of that, is what the study showed. Is that, is there any chance that that could be one of the projects? Or does it have to be a road project?
These are all road projects.
Can you kind of keep that on your radar?
I believe Director Beck, Vance Beck, he's got it on his radar because of these two past back-to-back rezonings in this area. So he's aware of it and, you know, I don't, I don't, I can direct him towards some GFA money or some Corps of Engineer, I don't know, to see what's out there on the environmental side. And then he recently went to the, our Tri Rivers Conference down in Bainbridge earlier this month. So he came back with a lot of good information there on dealing with those kind of environmental issues.
Okay, this is my second, can I-14 improvements in this area? I mean, some of the things that we've talked about, getting ready for a potential of I-14 coming through here, could any of those be added to this list?
Yeah, he's, he, they have, we gave them the 2020 study that shows what it would take to bring J.R. Allen up to interstate standards. And they have identified some of those projects. The problem with, you know, those projects were $200 million in 2020. They're probably $600 million in 2024. So it's, it's the match money that becomes the problem.
Right.
So, and that's, it comes out of our pocket. There's a lot of federal money out there through the bipartisan infrastructure law that we cannot go get because we don't have $20 or $40 million in match money. A lot of that was geared towards big cities with deep pockets, not towards middle, middle of the road folks. So that's the big challenge, is having the match money.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Council Huff. Yes, sir, MTP meeting, what time on the 10th?
December 10th, 5 to 7. Senovus Room, at library.
Thank you. All right, I think that's it.
All right, thank y'all.
Will, thank you.
Thank you. Mayor, that's all I have this tonight.
All right, Madam Clerk, you want to hit you? Hang on. Oh, why it doesn't show that? All right, we've got, there are a few folks on here. I did not see. Is your light on? Okay.
There it is. Mr. City Manager, I have two things that I want to bring to your attention. And I want, the first one, I don't know if it's you or if it's somebody else that would do this, but the sound and the picture on the screens in, in this room are not in sync. And they, I understand that if you're watching it at home, they are in sync, but they're not here.
Okay.
You see how that's not?
Huh.
Would you, would you see?
Okay.
Okay, the other thing that I want to bring to your attention is that I had a message this week from a woman whose name is Sue Hyder Kent. And she reminded me that in 2016, council passed a motion to name the floor at Comer Auditorium Gym for her father, who was Fred Hyder, Hyder. And Mr. Hyder was a coach up there for years. And this council passed that motion to name that. She was asked by, at that time, Ms. Browder was the Assistant Director of Parks and Rec. She was asked by her for biographical information on her dad. And she gave it to her, she never heard back from her. She told me that she went up there about two weeks ago and there is nothing in the Comer Auditorium Gym about her dad. Would you look into that and see where we are and see if we can't get that done and taken care of? That's one thing that's, that's really important to this family.
Sure.
And the last thing is, can you give us a very, very short update on the negotiations with Paus?
Well, I could, I'll say that we did receive their proposal on the 8th as was required. It's in the hands of our negotiation team and they are looking at it. And, and so that's an ongoing process. I, I don't want to give you a timeline, but I, I will give you a projection. And, and that projection is that.
I won't hold you to it, honey.
Yeah. I, I have said to them, the team, that I would love to be able to bring something to council in a presentation no later than, I believe the last meeting in December is the 17th. And, and then if we're able to, to do that on the 17th and get your input, Mayor and Council input, then I would like to have maybe a public setting that we can present it to the public and, and just hear from them. Maybe something like here at the council chambers. But then at the meeting in, with the goal of moving forward, if, if, if council can agree that, you know, in, in January when we meet, we'd be prepared to ask you for a vote. But that would be counted on the timeline.
It'd be a great Christmas present.
Yeah. So that's, I mean, I, you know, don't hold me to it, but, you know, because going back and forth with, with them could, you know, you know how that, you know, so that, that's the goal.
Thank you.
Council Hickey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Listen, Manager, I just want to bring something to your attention and maybe you can help me out with it. Progressive Funeral Home reached out to me. And the property across the street, when they have an overflow with funerals, people park over there and their concern is people crossing the street right there in front of their business. Is there any way that we could put up a crosswalk there to assist with, with the people that are coming over to the funeral home?
I, I would have to have engineer and take a look. Yeah. You have looked. Well, I, I don't, they said we've looked at it, I don't know the results, but let me just have them to, we'll put it in the referral and then we'll get a response. And so I don't know what the outcome of that was. But we'll take a look.
Yes, sir, thank you very much.
Council Crabbe.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager, we brought up several months ago about extending the metro route so it goes through Brookstone Center because of, because of all that construction there. Where are we on that?
They have contracted, I believe, with a consultant for the study. And I don't know when the results are going to come in, but they have contracted that with a, with our usual consultant.
What's the timeframe on something like that?
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll have to see what the status is, I don't know right off, but.
Because it seems so simple, you know, just.
I know, it, it seems simple, but we deal with, I almost said crazy federal regs, but federal government. But, I mean, you'd be amazed at, you know, what they require. But let me just give you an update on that.
Okay, thank you.
We, we're just doing an update. But I.
All right, Madam Clerk, your agenda, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So sorry. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. For the clerk's agenda, item one is a, item of information only. It's a memorandum from the Historic District Preservation Society Board of Directors, writing a memo in reference to the proposed parking deck in the Columbus Historic District. Item two, or minute, so various board.
Minute. All right, motion in a second to prove the minute. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? All right.
Next, we have board appointments, we have council appointments that are ready for confirmation.
All right, there is a motion in a second to confirm all those listed in A, B, and C. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Are there any opposed?
Mr. Mayor, I did just want to mention something for the record.
All right.
Tracy Walker was nominated at the last meeting by Council Crabbe. And I did receive an email from her on last week advising that she would like to roll off or rotate off that board. And so the Human Resources Director was recommending Ms. Donna Baker to move up to that regular member seat. And so we, we do already have her listed for confirmation for this time since she was nominated as her alternate seat. And so.
Well, all three of them are being confirmed.
Yes, all, all three were confirmed. Thank you, I just wanted to make that.
Okay, thank you.
For the record. And then we have council's confirmation nominations received from an organization or agency for the Animal Control Advisory Board for the seat of Kristy Ludi. The Columbus Department of Public Health is recommending the county manager, the new county manager, Danielle Saunders for this seat. She may be confirmed.
There is a motion to confirm and a second. All in favor, say aye. Are there any opposed? All right, Danielle is confirmed.
And next for the Hospital Authority, we still have three seats that are open for nominations. And the council submits three nominees for each of those three seats. Next, we have council appointments, any nominations would be listed for the next meeting for the Personnel Review Board. We have the alternate member one, two, and three seats that are open for nominations. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Good. Is any more business needs to come before the council? I entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion in a second, all in favor, say aye. Are there any opposed? All right, we are adjourned, everyone have a good evening.